Alright, good afternoon, everyone. Looks like a full agenda today and tonight, so but before I I call the regular meeting of council to order, I do have something to announce. And this is regarding our C O Mark Backen. Mark Backen started with the township as a young man working with the outdoor crews in operations. This was following in the footsteps of his father, who also worked for the township. Is he already on Mark Backen? He's very well, he's listening. Mark later went on to law school, receiving his law degree from Simon Fraser University. In nineteen ninety-six, he was hired by the council of the day as our chief administrative officer, and has reached the remarkable milestone of twenty-five years of municipal service with the township of Langley. Mark, it's my pleasure to present you with a plaque in recognition of your exceptional commitment to municipal service and your years of dedication and hard work as Township of Laney Chief Administrative Officer. And this is the map, the plaque, distanced, distanced presentation. I don't know if you, I don't know if you can all see it there. With that background thing, I think I'll turn. But basically, it's a, it's a, it's a plaque to, to mark and dated today, so.
Congratulations, Mark.
Back and here's your plaque. How many merits have you been through? One, two, three, um, number four? And none of them could get rid of you. Look at that.
Not as many as me, Mark.
Testament to his perseverance. Well, congratulations and thank you for all the work that you've done over the last twenty-five years. Look forward to twenty-five more, Mark. You have anything to say?
Just thank you, your worship, and thank you to all of council.
A man of many words. Alright, so with that, I'm going to move the adoption of the agenda items. Now, there is a motion of reconsideration has been added late, so the process, as I discussed with the clerk, would be to adopt and receive the agenda items and then second motion would be to add this to the agenda and then council can decide if it should be added to the agenda, so. So with that, I'm going to ask for a motion to adopt and receive the agenda items, as you see in front of you. I can have a motion, please.
Move.
And seconder. All those in favor? And opposed? Carry unanimously?
We just gone funny here.
Yeah, okay, Council Long, you.
Something's gone funny to the screen. Anyway, I'll make a motion to add the item as E eight and perhaps they were, well, I'll make that motion and the clerk can, can explain how that fits with the procedural bylaw, please.
Okay, so, so there's a motion moved for reconsideration motion and now does everyone have that in front of them?
I'm having trouble with my screen here, something sort of haywire.
I think it's, somebody's sharing a screen here.
Councilor Davis is sharing a screen.
Councilor Davis, if you could please go to the top of your screen and just stop sharing, please.
Unless you've got something to show us.
Just give a minute for that.
Ah, I think I can do it. There we go, I got it.
There we go.
Okay, we're back. Okay, Ms. Ms. Bar, so there's a motion on the floor. First of all, I'd ask for a seconder and then Ms. Bar will provide some comments. Is there a seconder? Counselor Davis seconds? Okay, Ms. Power, can you just provide some information on the procedure?
Um, as per section ten point eleven of the council procedure bylaw, reconsideration can be brought forward by any member of council at a, at a following meeting. In this case, the bylaw says that it's as pursuant to section six point zero seven. Six point zero seven, in order to give notice, under new business six point zero seven, there is a paragraph that says, if the member deems the item urgent, providing notice, notice to the township clerk prior to ten A M. The day of the meeting, adding a late item to the agenda requires a majority vote or unanimous consent of the council members and at the time of adoption of the agenda.
Thank you. And I understand that on this motion, it only speak to the reconsideration, not the substance of the motion at this point. And then, then the reconsideration would go on the agenda as E eight.
So at this time, we can speak to the merits of adding the item to the agenda. When it comes to item E eight, when we get to that item, if, if council chooses to put it on that location, we could then, there would be no discussion on reconsideration. It would simply be a vote to either reconsider or not. And then following that, if there was a vote, it would be to, to the merits of the item.
Okay, thank you.
Point, point of, point of information, just got a clarification. What, your ruling was unanimous? You said something or?
There's no ruling. No, no, there's no ruling. There's a motion on the.
No, I'm asking the clerk said something.
Okay, so what the?
Can I ask the, the point of information? What was, what was you said? Something? I wrote down unanimous. What's that?
I'm answering. It can be by unanimous consent or by majority vote. That's what that means. That's what the clerk said.
Well, I know what that means. Why use unanimous if you only need majority vote?
Counselor Ferguson, are you arguing with the clerk on her interpretation?
No, no, I just, I just wrote it down. I just, no, she did an excellent job.
No, okay, thank you. So Counsel Long, did you wish to speak on the merits of adding to the agenda, but you're not speaking to the reconsideration or to the motion?
And then, and so the procedural bylaw, your worship, does allow any of us to do it by by Wednesday at noon, which is the deadline. Of course, the reason that this came later is because of the announcement of the provincial funding, which changed the situation considerably. So that's the reason that it's come at a later date, and I believe it merits the reconsideration, your worship. Thank you.
I didn't, being added to the agenda. Thank you. Counselor Richter.
Yes, now I strongly object to this going on the agenda. Counselor Long's been on the council as long as I have, and he full well knows that if you want something reconsidered, you ask the mayor to either put it on the agenda, or you get two members of council to put it on the agenda, and you do that before Wednesday. You don't leave it to nine fifty-eight A M. On the day of the meeting. So I think there's a little game being played here, and I'm tired of the games, so I will not support this. And I actually think it should require unanimous consent, because I won't give it, and then it won't be happening.
So, uh, excuse me, no, I'll just finish this. All we're asking is to vote whether this should be added to the agenda. We're not going to discuss the merits of it. Uh, the clerk did say that this follows the procedural bylaw, and we're following the procedural bylaw, which is approved by council, so. Uh, you can support it or not support it. That's up to every member of councils. Determination. Uh, Counsel Woodward.
Uh, yeah, no, I was expecting a ruling, Mr. Ware. I didn't hear any rationale for urgency other than an announcement, even though this item's actually already on the agenda. Um, in terms of whether or not we're going to reopen, well, no, that's already been placed on the agenda by me, and I don't understand why. What's the urgency to, to consider it through reconsideration? I actually didn't hear rationale for urgency. So that would meet the criteria of the council procedure bylaw, so I'd like to hear some rationale for urgency in order to even proceed with this vote.
Okay, I think Counsel Long has already stated.
I didn't hear. Just stating that Dr. Henry said something, he's not a rational for.
Fair enough. You may vote for this or against this. It's your choice. Counselor.
Your worship, did they have trouble hearing my words? Is that the problem?
Yeah, well, yeah, I'll go back to you so you can reiterate what you said. If I have not heard what you said. Counsel Ferguson?
Okay, thank you. I, well, thank you. Um, I really, I just wanted some clarification. That was all. I understand now. Because the only reason why I put my hand up, I've heard the word unanimous twice. Okay, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Yeah, it was, yeah, it was unanimous consent. That's what I meant, or by majority. Thank you. Okay, Counselor Whitmarsh.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm, I think there is some new information that Counselor Long has suggested. Um, I think there is some level of urgency to make decisions around our rec centers. And if this is following procedure bylaws, which seems to be indicated to us that it is following that, then I'm not sure why, why we couldn't include it. So I'd be.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Long?
Yeah, well, I just, if you required me to reiterate that this is an emerging issue as of as of Wednesday, that's the reason it couldn't go on the agenda before Wednesday. I think that's pretty straightforward. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Woodward?
Yeah, I just guess I have to remind everyone, this was already placed on the agenda as per the proper procedure, putting it on the agenda via reconsideration. Um, again, Dr. Henry making some comments doesn't, doesn't provide urgency to place it on the agenda when it's actually already on the agenda. So maybe, maybe some haven't actually read the agenda, but again, I don't, I don't support this. Thanks.
Great, thanks. Counsel Richter?
Unmuting. Uh, yes, I would like to know when the announcement came through about the additional monies, because I thought it was well before the Wednesday deadline to get a notice motion in for this meeting's agenda.
I don't know. I don't know that. I don't have that answer. I'm sorry. Okay, I'm gonna call the question on adding this to the agenda. All those in favor? And opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, I've got Counsel Woodward, Counsel Ferguson, Counsel Richter opposed. Anybody else opposed I missed? Okay, so it's carried this on the agenda under E eight. Now move on to the minutes of regular council meeting of October twenty-sixth and public hearing meeting of October twenty-sixth. I could have a motion to adopt the minutes. Counsel Arnesson and a seconder. Have a seconder, Counselor Davis, any errors or omissions? None? All those in favor? Opposed? Kerry, thank you. We have a delegation, Mr. Brendan Martin and Ms. Marilyn Constable. And I'll ask the clerk to allow them into the meeting or to speak. Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Just, just welcome here. And just for your information, you have five minutes to present and thank you.
Um, my name is Brendan Martin. I'm pleased to be joined by Marilyn Constable here. Uh, we appear as citizens of Langley and as World Beyond War Peace and Climate Justice Advocates. Um, World Beyond War is a six-year-old peace organization with members in one hundred and seventy-five countries. The World Beyond War Peace pledges, we understand that wars and militarism make us less safe rather than protect us. And we commit to engage in and support nonviolent efforts to end the institution of war and preparations for war. Uh, let's first talk about um, climate change and fossil fuel. Vancouver just endorsed the fossil fuel nonproliferation treaty. Well, what's, what's that? Um, well, as environmentalist Sapporo Berman explained, climate change now like nuclear weapons for many of us who grew up in the sixties and seventies is an existential threat. We need to reframe the fossil fuel industry and its infrastructure as weapons of mass destruction. Uh, the three uh goals of the treaty are preventing the proliferation of coal, oil, and gas by ending all new exploration and production. Secondly, phasing out existing stockpiles and, and production of fossil fuel in line with the one point five degrees Celsius global climate goal and fast-tracking real solutions and adjust transition for every worker, community, and country. So Vancouver is um certainly ahead of the crowd in this regard. Um, unfortunately, even with the Paris Accord, the temperature is on track to rise by four degrees Celsius by the end of the century. This would be beyond bad. What kind of a disastrous world would that be? But the troubled fossil fuel industry spreads pro-oil counter narratives forecasting increased rather than decreased oil production and recklessly delaying just and fair transition to renewable energy. S F U Professor Mark Jacobard has written a wonderful book, The Citizen's Guide to Climate Change, which just came out this year, and I found it very useful. Um, Mark Jacobard, over the past three decades, has advised various governments on climate action, the government of Canada, governments of Canada, China, and the American Congress. His book demonstrates how the tobacco industry and the fossil fuel industry were successful in planting misinformation, delaying for decades the policies necessary for public health and safety. Thank you, council, for your energetic study and work to date on climate action. We know that, that council is climate sincere, as Professor Mark Jacobard would say. Let's now look at weapons and preparations for war. These contribute enormously to environmental harm and to greenhouse gases while greatly reducing human security. With regard to divesting from weapons, our federal government is going in the wrong direction. Canada is already embarking on a twenty-year plan to spend five hundred and fifty-three billion dollars on militarism that will not make us safe. Fifteen Canadian warships are to cost seventy billion dollars and one hundred and eighty-eight jet bombers that will further destroy our climate and kill mostly poor people will have a life cycle cost of a further fifty billion dollars or more. Peace groups are vigorously opposing this through the No Fighter Jets campaign. The money spent on just six of these bombers could instead bring clean water to all indigenous people in Canada. It's sad to realize that Canadian foreign policy enables American aggression. There is no such thing as good violence and bad violence. There's only violence with no winners. Despite this, Canada has been just a jolly useful enabler of American violence, sharing in the half million Iraqi child deaths.
Mister, Mister Martin, your five minutes up. If you just want to give your concluding remarks, thank you.
Okay, uh, yes. Uh, I will. I'll just skip to the end. Yes, my concluding remarks are that as we sanction violence, we also endorse the killing of one to two civilians for every uh, two combatants that are killed. Uh, this is not service. This is not good for our society or humanity. Uh, so in closing, I ask that council uh, resolve to divest from fossil fuels and weapons uh, for the good of society. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I see some questions from council. Counselor Whitmarsh?
Uh, yes, thanks for coming and, and sharing with us today. Um, I'm just wondering, um, when you mentioned that, uh, asking the township of Laney to divest from weapons, can you maybe just speak directly of, of the weapons that you're referring to in the township of Langley?
I'm not specifically talking about weapons in the township of Langley. I'm talking about uh, our acceptance of our government's policy to um to purchase a great deal of weapons and to buy into the um culture of war, but I'm not speaking to any specific weapons in Langley, although Abbotsford, I understand, is uh involved in the service of American warplanes. And uh, this is bad for our country and is bad for the planet.
Okay, thank you.
You, Counsel Arnesson?
Yes, um, thank you very much, and thank you very much for coming today. Um, I really appreciate the fact that you are strong advocates for something that we don't hear a lot about at the local government level, so I do appreciate that you're bringing forward information. I think of a, a very sincere nature and also one that ties things together that we likely don't think about at this level of government, such as militarization and the cost of doing so. And so what I'm getting, the gist is, to some degree, this is, you would want the township to be positive towards uh, an approach that would encourage the federal government, for example, that makes these kinds of decisions to move away from those kinds of uh, military investments on our behalf, so that we have, as you've stated quite eloquently, more money for other social good. Is that kind of the gist of, of um where you're coming from is my question?
Yes, that is correct, Counselor Arnesson. And um, I want to thank you for your support during the summer uh, in discussing these issues with us. And lastly, I might mention that this municipality gives up its sons when our government calls um, to go overseas to make war on other countries, and this is unnecessary. We must find a better way. Uh, after a century of, of uh, violence, uh, there is a better way.
Thank you. Thank you, Counsel Richter.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Martin, for your presentation. I am puzzled, though, why you would be bringing it to municipal council. We don't have weapons. At least not to my knowledge. And um, I, I certainly don't think we have any impact on whether or not weapons are stockpiled by this country or any other country for that matter, so. I'm, I'm not sure there's a lot we can do to help you with this, but thank you very much for your presentation.
Well, thank you, Counselor Richter. Um, I do think that um by the township making a statement that it will not invest in weapons and um, will not invest in fossil fuel, uh, this will help uh, these very important issues. Uh, this will prevent us uh, from engaging in unnecessary violence. So council does have a very powerful.
Okay, I can, I get the fossil fuels part. I just don't get the weapons part, because that is not part of our mandate, nor is it something that we do. You're asking us to go beyond our jurisdictions by getting involved in weaponry decisions, and I don't think that's appropriate. But as I said, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Ferguson?
Thank you. Is it Brendan? Is there Marilyn there as well with you?
Yes.
Okay, no, she doesn't have to speak. I just want to thank you both for coming. Um, I'm not sure if I agree with everything you've done, but I certainly support, you know, people to come forward to speak to council's delegation. If you look behind me, I know you may or may not see behind me the hoppy of those who are going to be serving November eleventh coming up, of those that served. Um, I'm wearing, as I say, my Legion tie, and I have my Legion badge on. I've been a fifteen-year member. And uh, you know, there's, there's a price for peace. I've been talking an awful lot, even within our community and the country about peace, so that's important to keep that message going. Uh, peace between our neighbors, peace between communities, peace at political times, and other things. Respect and decorum, and all those things go together. So I certainly want to thank both of you for coming. Keep up the cause. I'll agree with you on some things and disagree on the others, but uh, uh, we will see, we won't see you on the eleventh, because you can't do it with the social distances and things, but uh, thank you for coming.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor.
Could I quickly respond to that?
Sure.
So, uh, Counselor Ferguson mentioned Remembrance Day. One of the reasons I'm here, uh, it's more than a hundred years after the first Remembrance Day. And the world as a whole spends about two million, two trillion dollars on war. And um, municipal councils do have influence with the federal government. And that's why we're here, uh, because our federal government's not doing enough. So if municipal governments put forward resolutions, that will hopefully have an impact. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, and thank you for your presentation. There is no further questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's move on to um, presentations, and do you want to, Fort Langley Cemetery Mausoleum, a presentation for staff?
Thank you, your worship. Perhaps I can just, by way of introduction, your worship uh, inform or remind council why this is on council's agenda. At its meeting on October the twenty-sixth, council received a report from staff uh, that was following uh, on a request from a member of the public and referred the matter to staff for a report. So that's why we're here. Mr. Buckner and Mrs. Wagg are on hand to provide a presentation that will essentially have three parts, your worship. Uh, the, the bulk of it, the primary objective is to provide information to council regarding a request uh, for a mausoleum at the Fort Langley Museum. Uh, the bylaw, the cemetery bylaw does not currently provide for that use or that kind of a interment, if you will. Uh, the other part of the, the report is going to focus on the expansion uh, plans for the Fort Langley Museum. I apologize, Fort Langley Cemetery. Uh, and the third part is what was referenced uh, at the October twenty-sixth council meeting, and that was a finding of some human remains that we can provide more information to council on. So with that, your worship, I'm going to pass it on to Mrs. Wagg and Mr. Buckner, who will take counsel through the, the presentation slides.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Todd Buckner. I'm manager of park operations, which resides in the engineering division. I also have Roland Zwick, director of public works in the same room, but socially distanced and masked up. Uh, let me try and share my screen with you for now. Are you seeing my, are you seeing my screen?
Yes, it's all good, Ted. Yes.
Okay. Just letting you know, the Park Operations Department oversees the three cemeteries in the township. Next slide, Roland. So, the reason for the presentation is because council requested, after discussing the October twenty-sixth mausoleum report, council also requested that an update of the Langley or the Fort Langley Cemetery expansion plan be included, along with information on the discovery of human remains in a specific location in the Fort Langley Cemetery. We're going to provide an overview of the Fort Langley expansion plans as it currently sits. Discuss the family mausoleum request with regards to location, scope, form, and character. Discuss the issue with the discovery of human remains in a specific location in the Fort Langley Cemetery. Then potential options for council's consideration with a request for a family mausoleum in Fort Langley Cemetery. So at the October twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty council resolution was, at its meeting on, on the twenty-sixth, twenty twenty, council received a report with a request for consideration of family mausoleum at the Fort Langley Cemetery, referred it to staff for the presentation regarding mausoleum, as well as an update on the Fort Langley Cemetery space requirements. Township has uh, three very unique cemeteries. The Fort Langley Cemetery, which is established in eighteen eighty-one, followed by the Murrayville Cemetery, which was established in eighteen ninety-one, are the historic cemeteries that we have in the township, and they both have cemetery halves located in them. The Murrayville Cemetery now has a flagpole located at the Senate half, which was donated by the Langley family. There will be a Remembrance Day ceremonies held at both sites, limited number of attendees. However, the celebrations will be streamed live for all to view if they choose. Langley Lawn Cemetery was established in nineteen sixty-seven. The word lawn in its name is because it's a cemetery designed that provides for open space by only allowing flat markers to be installed, thereby not obstructing the view. Lawn cemeteries, lawn cemetery with memorial markers also reduce the mowing maintenance cost because only mowers are required and weed eater and trimming around the upright markers is not required, as, as in our two historic cemeteries. Within the current cemetery bylaw, there is a clause that states that in the cemetery profits at the, at the end of the year must be transferred into reserve accounts to fund future cemetery upgrades. Presently, presently, there have been no profits transferred into the reserve account. Staff are going to deliberate on the best approaches to turn cemeteries into potentially a profit center for the township. Flat marker, memorial markers, and upright memorial marker casket lot accommodate the following interments can hold up to two vertical caskets and eight cremated remains, or just eight cremated remains and no caskets. So the two pictures on the right of the side illustrate an upright memorial markers and a flat memorial markers. Flat memorial cremation markers um, lots also allow for two interments of cremated remains. Colbarium niches are upright rectangular structures that allow for two interments of cremated remains in each of the niches. There are a maximum of forty-eight niches in each columbarium. Each niece has a, has for a total, pardon me, each niece has a potential for two pairs cremated remains being turned for ninety-six in total. The picture on the left, the columbarium is with, is a columbarium with niches. Scattering gardens are an area that families are allowed to scatter their loved ones' ashes. These scattering gardens are located by columbariums, so if families choose, they can do a memorialization on the ends of the columbarium. The columbarium picture has a scattering garden to the right of the columbarium as an example. Fort Langley Cemetery Concept Plan, two thousand and nineteen. Parks Operation hired a consultant to review cemetery operations and growth. Parks Operation hired a consultant to review cemetery operations and growth plans. Result identified that the trend currently is towards cremation burials away from casket burials. They recommend that the township does not include any mausoleums into the cemetery system because of the decline in casket burials and the high cost of purchasing an interment in them. They also recommended, if the township does decide to install a mausoleum, Fort Langley would not be the appropriate cemetery because of its recognizable historic context, unique characteristic of it, plus it is registered as a historic site. Based upon the findings, the consultant recommended the township pursue the development of an unused section of the Fort Langley Cemetery to increase casket, cremation burial lots, columbarium and scattering gardens. In May 2019, council was informed of these findings, both through a report and a presentation. In the presentation, council was shown the map of the concept plan to expand Fort Langley Cemetery that is on the slide now. Please note that the Fort Langley Park parking lot actually resides on Fort Langley Cemetery land. And the expansion concept plan will eliminate 50% of the parking lot used and return it for cemetery use in the future when the demand and need arise. June 2019, the same consultant was hired to complete a detailed design construction plan along costing the undeveloped portions of Fort Langley Cemetery. Design will be shown in subsequent slides. Staff submitted a capital budget request for $520,000 in 2020 budget for Phase 1 development, but it was unfunded. The current availability at Fort Langley Cemetery. There's zero flat or upright memorial casket lots available, but there are 25 in the veteran sections, which are reserved for veterans and their spouses only. There are 18 flat memorial marker cremation lots, and 64 of them are in the veteran section for the veteran and their spouse. There's 29 niches in the columbarium and one scattering garden. The lack of inventory has been the subject of some emails to mayor and council in 2019 and 2020. Also, there are 40 families are currently on an expression of interest list, waiting for casket burial lots to become available. Between the emails to mayor and council and the expression of interest list provides that there is a demand for more capacity at the Fort Langley Cemetery. Another process is to increase the capacity in the Fort Langley cemeteries is through, or sorry, with the township cemeteries is through grave reclamation. A burial lot can be reclaimed by the township if the purchase is purchased over 50 years ago. The purchaser is over 90 years old and the burial lot is not occupied. Park Operations is in the process in all three cemeteries to see what burial lots are available to be reclaimed and resold. Before a burial lot can be reclaimed, an attempt must be made to contact the original purchase through correspondence, and then there's a 90-day waiting period. After that period, the burial lot can be reclaimed. If the original purchase shows up after burial lot has been resold, then the township must provide another one. This map illustrates the finally Fort Langley Cemetery Design Expansion Plan, which is formulated upon a phased-in approach based upon demand. Funding requires $520,000 for Phase 1 expansion has been submitted for council consideration in the 2021 budget. Phase 1 is adding capacity for both burial and cremation lots, along with adding columbarium and increased scattering garden areas. Existing scattering garden onsite will be incorporated into a new one. Also part of Phase 1 is relocating the existing soil spoil bins and creating a fenced cemetery yard in the northwest section of the cemetery, which is currently used for the Fort Langley Park parking. As mentioned in previous, Fort Langley Cemetery is actually, Fort Langley, sorry, Fort Langley Park parking lot is actually located on Fort Langley Cemetery lands. This design did not include a mausoleum. Phase 1 capacity. There's 100, there'll be 104 flat memorial marker lots. The reason. The new concept is dedicated area of 52 upright marker casket lots. This is considered a premium location with a higher price than a flat marker casket lot. Upright memorial markers will only be allowed in the dedicated area of Phase 1 expansion. There'll be 128 flat marker lots. These are traditional two feet by two feet cremation lots that we currently have in our inventory. But what will be new will be 16 four-by-four family cremated upright marker lots, which will hold four cremated remains. Are, as I mentioned before, are new option. They are located in a dedicated area and are considered a premium option with a higher fee than the traditional two-by-two flat memorial marker cremation lots. There'll be three columbarium with 144 niches. There'll be two scattering gardens. And the above picture illustrates an upright family cremated lots with a shrubbery hedge roll behind them. Fort Langley Cemetery is designed to have a lavender hedge roll. Request for the family museum at Fort Langley Cemetery. We're going to review location, project scope and consideration. In 2009, the township was approached by a family seeking permission to have a mausoleum constructed for solely their use in the Fort Langley Cemetery. The map shows the footprint for the potential location where the mausoleum could be constructed, currently at the northern section of the Fort Langley Cemetery. The mausoleum installation will eliminate two columbarium with 96 niches that has a potential of 102 cremated remains being interred as been planned for future expansion. Expansion plan can be accommodated in Phase 1 if endorsed by mayor and council. Project scope. Family is requesting a walk-in mausoleum for eight family members, four above-ground casket interments on either side. Estimated footprint would be 15 feet by 16. The family is going to surrender eight existing lots that they currently have. They're unoccupied, which has a footprint of 16 by 16. Cost recovered for design, construction and purchase of the specialized equipment needed for the interments will be covered by the family. Estimated costs not included in installation is between $150,000 and $200,000. As far as I'm aware, there are no other Metro Vancouver municipalities that currently offer mausoleum as an interment options. It is the private cemeteries that currently fill this market in Metro Vancouver. The cost of a single casket crypt inside a mausoleum is between $40,000 and $85,000 per. Price varies depending on what level the casket crypt is located. Lower the level, the more expensive they are. Cities of Kelowna and Pictintin Cemeteries currently offer out their mausoleums, and the cost for a single interment in a crypt is approximately $24,000. Considerations. The trend is towards cremated interments. 2019 Cemetery Operation Review did not recommend a mausoleum in the township. There's the form and character, which is reviewed by the Heritage Advisory Committee. If the mausoleum is approved, then it'll have to be approved actually by the Consumer Protection of B.C. Then we'll have to update the bylaws to accommodate similar requests and also update the fees and charges. Potential options. Endorse the request for the family mausoleum and direct staff to proceed with the next steps. Update applicable bylaws. Seek Consumer Protection B.C. approval. Engage with the family and consult with the Heritage Advisory Committee. Not endorse request for family mausoleum. Staff to inform the family. I'll go back to this slide at the end of the presentation. For now, I want to talk about the discovery of human remains in 2019, the specific, with a specific location in the Fort Langley Cemetery. Effective after opening the area in 2015 was Consumer Protection B.C. approval through a desktop office exercise. Township has recently discovered traces of migrated human remains in an area below the surface of the ground in a specific section of Fort Langley Cemetery. Early 2020, subsurface scans were done of an area in question was completed and indicated that there is potential that human remains might exist in these certain areas, a certain area. Only excavation could determine if human remains exist. However, this is a sensitive matter because we could potentially encounter other human remains, and it might disperse, disturb other burial lots on either side of the area. This is likely due to the age of the cemetery, burial practice, using manual labor, casket deterioration over time, natural movement and shifting of ground and soil conditions. As a result, is unable to allow any future interment casket burials in the specific location in part of the, in the, in this, in the specific area. Once all the right-of-interment holders have confirmed, then the township will seek Consumer Protection B.C. for approval when needed to for relocation. This is a unique situation, not prescribed in previous or current versions of the bylaw. Available options for unoccupied casket burial right-of-interment holders is to relocate or surrender. The casket burial lot may only be used for cremated remains in the future and not for interment by burial caskets. If the family intentions are to only inter cremated remains in a casket burial lot, they are not required to relocate. However, the exception is if a casket burial has occurred and if the family has the right of interment on the casket burial lot beside, and their plan is to inter a casket burial in it, then the township, with the family's permission, will attempt to install a lawn crypt. If this is not successful because of human remains has been discovered, then a casket burial will not be printed in that lot. If we are not able to provide a casket interment, we are offered to relocate the existing burial to a new location subject to Consumer Protection B.C. approval. The map identifies the location of a specific area where the migration of human remains occur, which is green. The section highlighted in yellow shows an area offered for relocation. Interments on either side of the green section of the south side of the cemetery road occurred in the 1900s, while the north of the road occurred in 1920. Last slide, potential options. This last slide, we re-rated it again for potential options. Endorse the request for the family mausoleum and direct staff to proceed with the next steps. Update applicable bylaws. Seek Consumer Protection B.C. approval. Engage with the family. Consult with Heritage Advisory Committee. Not endorse requests for family mausoleum. Staff will inform the family. That concludes my presentation.
Well, thank you very much for that presentation. Very informative and certainly I'm a lot more enlightened about this issue today than I was when the motion first came to council. So thank you for that. There's several questions from council. I'll start with Councilor Long.
Yeah, well, thank you, Mr. Buckner and Roland and Your Worship for allowing me to speak at the presentation that was given. So this, this is very in-depth, for sure, a presentation. So I guess I'll leave the discovery of the remains as a separate issue because I think this is supposed to be more about the mausoleum. And just to clarify, Your Worship, that that report now is live. Are we voting on that right now because it was referred to this meeting?
I'll ask clerk, did we receive it or was it referred without a decision? So we could do nothing and, or we could endorse, is that? Ms. Bauer?
At this point, council could make a motion to endorse any of the options that were provided. At this time, none are on the floor.
Okay.
Okay, because it was referred to the presentation. Okay, so my understanding was that because your option, potential option here talks about updating the bylaws and in anticipation, it would appear, to more of the mausoleums being installed. Whereas I thought that this was sort of a one-off because the family had eight plots. And that is, wouldn't be possible to accumulate eight plots today because, as you said earlier in your presentation, that the cemetery is full. So this is different, what you're telling us, though, or expands upon that because the mausoleum would not be constructed on the eight plots that they purchased, but rather be located on the end, which I suppose might be better for visuals. But that's going to take the place of these other potential, I forget what you called them, storage units, well, burial sites for those with ashes. So that would, that's going to change the whole layout of the cemetery. So is that the only option then that, that if we approved it, it wouldn't be constructed on top of the eight lots that they own, but rather would be located at the other side of the cemetery?
So, Your Worship, perhaps I'll start and ask either Mrs. Wagg or Mr. Buckner to jump in and provide additional information. The question of accommodation is one that, once it's made to one party, as a local government, we have to provide the same provision or the same ability to others. Subject to conditions, obviously. In this particular case, as Councilor Long has identified and as part of the presentation, the family requesting had already had seven entitlements. So it's going to be easier for us to accommodate the request. But the only way that we can do that is through a bylaw amendment that would then, in theory, provide the same ability to others who come forward. It doesn't mean that they will be entitled to, or actually we will have the ability to accommodate them, but at least in theory, we'll have the ability to accommodate them. Again, subject to council, subject to discussions with the owners, subject to the bylaw amendment process, subject to Consumer Protection of B.C. approving it, subject to Heritage Commission, Heritage Advisory Committee approving it, and then ultimately subject to the individual proponents committing to cover the costs. That's also a big, big condition as well.
Okay, thank you. And now what about the question of where it would be located? Because if it's located, if it was a one-off, well, it wouldn't be because you're saying we'd have to adjust the bylaw. But still, the location of, proposed location of this is different than I think I understood when the report came out. The location is not where the eight plots is. It is being proposed to be at the other end, which would preempt the ability to put another structure there. Is that correct? Trying to think of the word for that columbarium, I think it is, right?
Mr. Buckner, do you want to respond?
Yes, you are correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Richter.
Yes, I agree with Councilor Long from the perspective that there's two separate issues here. One is this mausoleum, and the other one is, of course, the human remains that have been identified in this cemetery. So dealing with the mausoleum, I've got a number of questions. First of all, the family approached us in 2009 for a mausoleum. And yet, in 2019, we had a review of the cemeteries done, which clearly stated no mausoleums in Fort Langley because of its historical nature, as well as its limited space. So I'm not understanding why something from 2009 is coming to us now in 2020 when there was a report in May of 2019 saying no mausoleums? And as I recall, we endorsed that report. So could, could I get an explanation on that, first of all?
My apologies. Actually, it was 2019. I misspoke when I said 2009.
Okay, so this request for a family mausoleum that came in 2019, did that come before or after the report to council that was done by professionals, I assume, was presented to council?
Came after the report.
It came after the report. So we already knew that we didn't want mausoleums there, and now we're looking to make an exception? Okay, so my second question is, how many families are going to be able to put mausoleums in this particular cemetery given the significant constraints that already exist in the cemetery size-wise? So would this be a situation where we would only ever have one mausoleum there because we just simply don't have room for other mausoleums?
Mrs. Sophia, I think perhaps you could help. One of the answers in this particular. One of the answers in this particular, this family has requested knowing the bylaw. But as all residents do have the opportunity to take anything before council, it's up to council then if they wish to, to approve it or not. And that's why it's here today. And I don't know, I can answer for the spacing.
Thank you, your worship. Yeah, I will, I will again take a stab and because I'm not in the same room as Mr. Buckner, I, I, I wasn't sure if he was going to respond or wait for me to ask him to respond. In any case, it, it really depends on, on who it is that's making the request. If it's the same situation, same scenario as the one at council has been asked to look at and consider at this point, there will be accommodation made. But am I correct, Mr. Buckner, if there's going to be a request from others who do not have the right of intermittent within the Fort Langley Cemetery? Are we able to accommodate that request as well or not?
Thank you, your worship. It's Roland Swag speaking in the same room with Tab. So, as previously explained, in the 2019 presentation to council, provided expansion plans for all three cemeteries and none of those expansion plans included any mausoleums. So, at this time, we are processing a unique request for one at Fort Langley, which we can accommodate the plans. We will lose the, the ability for one mausoleum. But right now, we are not, I guess, planning for any expansion at the other two cemeteries that include a mausoleum structure. Because there's no other request that's been received to date except for this one.
Okay, well, but again, it goes back to a point that Mr. Safi made that once we do it for one, because this is a public cemetery, we need to be prepared to do it for all. And so, my question really is, how many can we reasonably fit in in this cemetery if we break with the current bylaw to accommodate one family now? How many other families can we accommodate with mausoleums?
Thank you, your worship. The Langley Lawn Cemetery, based on current inventory, has the most potential growth with respect to additional capacity. Both the Fort Langley Cemetery and Mirvel are quite near capacity. So, again, staff have not previously considered mausoleum at the Langley Lawn Cemetery, but they could, subject to direction of council, look at exploring some design options for one or multiple public mausoleums or family mausoleum at the Langley Lawn Cemetery.
Okay, but I'm, I'm still not understanding if mausoleums have up to this point in time been handled by private cemeteries. And it's a decision of a family, of course, whether they want a mausoleum. Why wouldn't we continue to let private cemeteries handle the demand for mausoleums? We just approved a, or gave prints of the third reading to a, a large cemetery, new cemetery location, south of Alder Grove. Why wouldn't we direct mausoleum requests towards that particular private cemetery?
Certainly, your worship, maybe I can jump, jump in at this point again. That is an option that council, I guess, we, we as staff are looking for council to, to provide. It is not something that staff is recommending. It is a, a request from a family that we are bringing forward for council to consider. Council has, as, as outlined in the presentation slides, two options that we can think of, we could have thought of. One is to approve it and the other one is to not approve it. Even though there has been a decline in recent years, as the consultants' report was able to find in terms of the mausoleums, there appeared to be a continuation of, or at least some interest from some people. So, this would only allow us on a, on a request basis to be able to accommodate them, subject to conditions being met. I think what I heard from staff is that while we can accommodate them throughout the Langley cemeteries, three cemeteries, it is not a guarantee that it will be accommodated at Fort Langley. It is more likely at Langley Lawn and, and, and potentially even at, at Mirvel. But it really depends on, on the timing and it depends on who the requests has come from. But on the whole.
Well, why, excuse me, Mr. Safi, why, why would who be involved in this decision? It's not a who decision, it's a what decision?
Yes, but it depends on whether they're willing to give up existing allotment, if you will, in terms of capacity. That would help us with the capacity constraints. That's the only reason why, why the who comes into play.
Okay, the report basically says to us that, or the report that's in the package this week, says that staff retain leads and associates who are consultants knowledgeable in cemetery development to complete a comprehensive review and identify steps. Did we pay for this mausoleum study? Or did the family pay for it? And if we paid for it, how much did we pay for it?
As I remember, I will look to Mrs. Wag and Mr. Buckner to confirm, your worship. The study was, was in the process of being finalized. So, rather than engaging a new consultant, we expanded the scope of the work of the, the current consultant that we had to look at this aspect as well. And I think the costs were, were minimal. Mrs. Wag, do you remember what the cost may have been?
That's correct. We're between $1,000 and $2,000 for the additional mausoleum scope review.
Okay, but previously, we had been assured that the family would be paying all costs. So, obviously, this is one cost they haven't paid. The other thing is on page three of the report, there in the third paragraph down, it says further that township will own the mausoleum, including ongoing care and maintenance responsibilities. This is a very significant policy decision, owning a mausoleum and maintaining it. I would imagine the maintenance costs over the lifetime, well, the many lifetimes, the perpetuity of a mausoleum would be quite extensive compared to the maintenance costs of a, of a typical cemetery such as we have right now. So, to me, this is a policy decision that's deviating from our current practices and, and should be discussed as such, not as a one-off. In terms of the expansion that's needed in this cemetery, and I agree that there are, there is a need to expand this and I know we have a plan and it's coming, or a preliminary plan. But the whole issue was regards to the pool back behind it. If we removed or relocated the pool, how much additional space would that free up for future cemetery use in Fort Langley?
Your worship, we have not analyzed that. So, I'm afraid I can't provide the, the specific answer to the question at this point because it was never part of the, part of the consideration. But I guess in response to the previous question that councillor Richter raised, the intent would be, yes, this is a policy decision, that's why it's in front of council. But if council was to entertain this, the, as, as outlined in the presentation slides, one of the steps would be to develop a, a new fee structure that would include ongoing and, and maintenance of the, the mausoleum in perpetuity. So, the family and not the township would be, would be responsible to the, the, the new structure of the fees and charges that would be payable upon request for mausoleums.
Okay, but I was under the impression that when we're looking at significant policy deviations, that it goes to council policy committee for review because of the impact of costs long-term. I, I'm very uncomfortable with making this decision on the basis of one family. And I think that, and particularly because it's located in Fort Langley, I think we're missing an option in the list of options, which is, I think this needs to go out for co, public consultation in Fort Langley of the Fort Langley residents to see whether or not they agree with the idea of mausoleums in the first place. Because just even looking at this map, it would seem to me that the most we could fit in to that particular area might be four mausoleums. So, I mean, how many potential other people are being displaced to accommodate four mausoleums? So, my, my recommendation and what I will be asking to do, if a motion goes on the table to proceed, is that we send it to the public for consultation. So, I'm very concerned, as I say, about the policy that's involved here. And I, and I think we shouldn't be making this policy decision today without further input. So, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Oh, and are we going to come back to the human remains? Because I have a big.
This is a, this is a, was a report from staff. So, this is the time to ask questions for staff. So, if you have a question, this would be the appropriate time.
Okay, well, I, I would like to know, how come those lots were sold? And I know for a fact that some of them were sold in 2015 because I purchased some of them. Why there was not a scan of the ground done there before the lots were sold? Like, why did we not do proper due diligence by scanning?
Mr. Sophia?
Thank you, your worship. As I understand it, your worship, it is not part of the normal process or best practices for a scanning when you're looking at an existing cemetery with a clear area that could be used to accommodate additional intermittent or plots. So, when it was sold, it was assumed to be available as a potential area for additional burial capacity. And as such, and as was referenced in the, that presentation, it was simply a, a sort of a desktop or office review. It was, it did not include any sort of scanning or underground, I guess, investigation or assessment. And that's why it was made available for, for public purchase.
Oh, well, I just think that this discussion has to come back to council. Perhaps not in connection with this one, but I think it's a discussion we need to have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councillor Ferguson?
Well, there's certainly been an awful lot of discussion. I don't want to repeat what's already been said. There's been issues put forward. Obviously, they will get information come back. Staff is probably walking a thin line on, you know, what we need to do. There's all sorts of information. I want to thank Mr. Buckner, Mr. Swag and his staff for bringing this forward. But now I've got them and they're both together. Can I ask them a quick question? Within the Fort Langley plan and other plans, the seniors advisory committee are always asking, is there a option or an opportunity for green burials?
Yes, we're looking into green burials. But the consultant suggested that we facilitated Langley Lawn Cemetery because that's where we have the most vacant property currently?
Well, that certainly answers my question. Certainly, there's a lot of things that need to be addressed here. But I really appreciate this report because when it did come up regarding mausoleum, I had a lot of questions as well, as did other members of council. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Whitmarsh?
Thank you. Yeah, just lots of good questions asked already. My question was around the mausoleums and their sort of capacity of a mausoleum. And, and if we were to build or have mausoleums put particularly, let's say, on Langley Lawn, does that increase capacity of the, of the cemetery? Or do mausoleums decrease the capacity? It seemed to me just intuitively that as we build up in these mausoleums and use less ground space, that it would expand our capacity. But I'm not clear on that. Maybe staff could help.
I'll take a stab again and ask Mr. Buckner or Mrs. Wag to help or correct me if I'm wrong. But it really depends, your worship, it depends through you, the councillor Whitmarsh, on the desire of the family and, and how council directs staff to structure the bylaw. So, in this particular case, it would accommodate, if approved by council, the mausoleum that is, would accommodate more than two. I believe it's four or six or eight intermittent options. But there could be a potential for a mausoleum to only allow for one or two, in which case, obviously, it will, it will not be the same or less, but rather more, what's the best way of putting it? More of a, of a ground impact than, than a normal typical historic burial ground.
Okay, so, right, and this, this mausoleum, just so I understand correctly, that if, if, if it was to go ahead, it would, it would have to replace one of the columbariums? That would accommodate, like, I can't remember the number now. Was it 100 or something in, is that, in, in terms of cremation, 100 interments? Is that, is that correct or am I not understanding that?
Mr. Buckner, over to you.
Thank you, your worship. So, the proposed expansion plan that we had shown, there are two proposed or contemplated columbarium with, I think it was 92 niches that would be replaced with this mausoleum. In return, we would reclaim those two, those eight lots that they have the right of intermittents on.
Right, so we, we would lose two columbariums, which is, would be 92 spaces each? Okay. All right, that, I, I think I'm, I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Anderson.
Yes, thank you, your worship, and also thank you, Mr. Buckner and Mr. Safi for filling in some of the details further to the report because I along, I think with other councillors, have a lot of questions about this. When I read the report, the thing that stood out to me, and of course, has been underlined in our conversation today, is the report in 2019 by Lee and Associates did not support putting a mausoleum in the Fort Langley, in the Fort Langley Cemetery. Therefore, I, I looked at this and I thought, well, clearly, we have a situation that potentially is just a one-off, potentially. And it seems to me that there is an awful lot of moving parts if one wished to move this forward because there has to be a change to the bylaw and other things. I, to me, it's not predicated on any particular rationality on our part, having just adopted really a 2019 report saying we shouldn't do this. Now, any other consideration I, I might consider separate and apart from this because some other issues have been brought up, such as the potential impact on the pool area, which we're already discussing. So, I, I'm very reluctant to go beyond the four corners of this report and make any other decisions because I, I feel simplistically that a mausoleum is not a very efficient use of our limited cemetery space. And if we're going to approach the evolution of our style and add them to the potential, I think it's going to disadvantage the, the amount of spaces that we have. And so, you know, I'm, I'm not going to support this going forward.
Is there a question to staff?
Oh, sorry, is there a question?
This is for, this is on the report. We're just asking questions to staff.
Okay, 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 sorry. I, I will, thank you, your worship. I, I, I will ask then, in what way does this take into consideration the, the pool conversation? Is there any?
It does not. This is, this is not related to the pool discussions in any shape or form because the expansion plans of the cemetery never included the, the pool area.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Kunst?
Yeah, thank you. Um, my, my question through your worship to staff is, do you know how long this family have had the eight plots that they've owned in the Fort Langley Cemetery?
Thank you. Through the worship, based on our quick review, they purchased the lots in 2004.
And would, would, if this decision doesn't go, that we're going to have a mausoleum, would, would they be able to sell those and then, and then go to a, a private cemetery if they wish to have a mausoleum? I don't know how these things work, so it's just more for my own information.
Thank you, yeah. At any time, a right of a German holder can surrender their lots.
Okay.
If it's unoccupied, of course.
And, oh, yeah, one more question. Other municipalities, do they, you know, have mausoleums in there as part of their, what they offer?
Thank you through your worship. Our review of Metro Vancouver municipalities indicate there is no mausoleum present at local government municipalities. We did find two in the interior, and again, they're quite expensive for an intermittent, between $40 and $80,000. We did find two in the interior, and again, they're quite expensive for an internment, between forty and eighty thousand dollars per in the private and twenty-five in the one that's above ground in Penticton, I believe it was.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm gonna ask staff if they can put that slide up that had the options. I see there's two more. Members of council who've spoken once already want to ask a question, but if you just put the slide up first on the options. And so, you know, just before I go to the second second round, we have the two options. One is to not endorse. This was a one-off, and all families have the right to to request to counsel to to look at something that's beyond the bylaw, and this family has taken that option. It's up to us to decide if we wish to proceed with this or if we wish to just not endorse it and follow the the report that we received in twenty nineteen to no mausoleums or to to make an exception. So that's what's before council. Mr. Backer, did you have a comment?
Thank you, worship. I just wanted to reaffirm what you've stated, that this is at the request of a family outside the organization. It's stated quite correctly. We have a study. We have a policy position that's historically been in place. But the family, quite appropriately, is asked for council's consideration of their application. That application came forth, resulting in the report. That's where the council then determined it was appropriate from the report to a presentation before proceeding further. So these potential options should be helpful because I'm hearing some suggestions that further study is needed. I I think further study is is needed if, in fact, council wishes to proceed down the path of mausoleums. But if they are not prepared to do so, which most of the the discussion seems to indicate, that it may not be necessary to go forward other than to advise the family that this matter is not being endorsed, if that's the correct interpretation.
Thank you. So I'll go to the three questions, but I would suggest council that we look at the last option that we don't endorse, that's not endorsed. And then if that fails, then obviously we'll go through the the next piece of it, but it sounds to me like
Mr. Mayor, if you're moving that, I'll second it, that we not endorse it.
Okay, I'll move it. And second by Counsel Richter. Now, I see Counsel Richter, Counsel Long, Counsel Whitmarsh, hands are up. Counsel Richter, did you wish to add anything?
No, I just find it very puzzling, just to go back to the the fact that staff spent money on a report, reviewed our capacity quite extensively, brought the report forward in twenty nineteen. It was quite clear in the report then that we weren't going with mausoleums. That why they would be bringing this back to us now after, as as we were told, council had already adopted the report of no mausoleums, and then all of a sudden, there's a request for mausoleum. I'm quite comfortable that the private sector provides valid options for families that would like mausoleums.
Mr. Mayor, there's a bunch of mics on. I'm just warning you to let you know. Thank you.
Thank you. Yep.
Yeah, and I I'm comfortable that the family, if they want to proceed with a mausoleum, can find a solution in a private cemetery in Langley. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Long.
Yeah, well, your worship, I am I'm glad we're spending plenty of time on this. It's such a sensitive issue, and I imagine that the family has considered other locations and they want Fort Langley for whatever reasons. But my understanding i- in the potential options, and I know we're discussing the final one, but in the other option, why do we have to update applicable bylaws? Could we not potentially, and it depends how the vote goes, just give this one particular one an exception, and it's only from my understanding because they happen to own eight lots. That that seems to be a scenario that cannot come up again, and certainly the policy that we've accepted from twenty nineteen should stay in effect, but it it can staff ask it, is is it possible to only give this a one-up? But Mr. Safi seemed to think or did indicate that if we did this for one, we'd have to do for all.
I think it might be like a site-specific zoning. We have to still amend the bylaw to accommodate for this one. It doesn't mean that every other one would would get through. That's what I understood from Mr. Seffy. Is that correct?
Your worship, the bylaw needs to be amended to accommodate the mausoleum. Now, as I said earlier, it could be updated in a way that it would make it very difficult to, I guess, be able to, even though it might be possible in theory, based on the the conditions that we are agreeing to with this particular family, those being the the costs in their entirety, the upfront design, capital costs, construction costs, and ongoing maintenance costs in perpetuity being borne by the family, it would likely not be able to be replicated for others. So as as the bylaw is concerned, as far as the bylaw update is concerned, because of the fact the current bylaw is prohibitive of mausoleums, it must be amended to accommodate a mausoleum request. But then the structure of it can be as as council directs staff to to do.
Okay, so that's helpful. Thanks, your worship. Now, the second question before I I vote, I guess, is why does it have to be relocated? Because the sad part is, appears that two columbariums would have to be eliminated from the expansion plan, which can accommodate, I forget the number, you know, a hundred and some odd units. And that's because why can't the mausoleum be constructed on top of the lots that they currently own? Which means it wouldn't affect, in my, from what I understand, wouldn't affect the numbers at all, and we could still have the columbariums at the other expansion.
I'll have to ask Mrs. Swag or Mr. Buckner to respond to that. My understanding was that because of the the location of it, it would not be very aesthetically, I guess, pleasing to have a structure in the middle of an otherwise in-ground burial. But Mrs. Swag?
That is, that is correct.
Okay, and that's what I thought. Thank you very much, your worship.
Thank you. I don't see any further hands up, so I'm gonna call the question. And this would be to not endorse the request for a family mausoleum, and staff will inform the family. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Any opposed? Counsel Long is opposed. Anybody else? At motion carries. All right, move on to reports to council. E one is development permit application number one zero one one seven two, Westmont Properties on sixty-two Avenue, twenty-two or three hundred block. Could I have a motion, please? Counsel Davis moves and seconded. Counsel Ferguson seconds. Any discussion? I see Counsel Richter. Counsel Richter.
Yes, I have a question here, and it doesn't really pertain to form or character, but I I'm quite concerned with the density that's going into that lot, and I know it's been zoned for. But what are we going to do? Does staff have any plans to put a streetlight at, I believe it's what, sixty-fourth? Two oh three, sixty-two, two oh three. Because right now, traffic is queuing there already, and I I can just imagine how much more it's gonna queue. And I know we can't require it as part of the development permit, but I would like to ask if there's plans to put a light in there.
And it's the traffic control signal you're saying, not?
Yeah, like at at this section right here.
Okay.
Right there, yeah.
Okay, Mr. Seffy?
Thank you, your worship. Yes, there are plans, your worship, to put a signal there. As you know, the boundary, the municipal boundary of the township is the central line of sixty-second Avenue, so we share sixty-sixty-sixty-second Avenue with the city of Langley. In order for a traffic signal to to operate, even though there's been an agreement in principle to installing a signal at that intersection, it requires additional widening on the south side because of the fact that left turn movements have to be accommodated. Left turn eastbound going north, as well as ultimately at some future date, ideally, westbound going south, even though that doesn't currently exist. So because of that, it is not possible to to install one right now. But the plan is to do exactly what Counsel Richter is suggesting. At some point in the future, the time to be determined in collaboration with the city of Langley.
Well, perhaps, Mr. Mayor, I could put another motion forward after this is dispensed with that we ask staff to refer this, the need for a light in this area to the twenty-twenty-one budget process because it is going to be a big problem once those buildings are built. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so you know, for the discussion, I'll call the question. All those in favor? And opposed? No one opposed. It carries unanimously. Counsel Richter, you wish just to make a motion to?
Yes, I would like to refer the the priority need for a traffic signal at two, two oh third and sixty-second Avenue to the twenty-twenty-one budget process.
Is there a second? Counsel Davis seconds. Counsel Long, discussion?
Yeah, so when I heard that about the light, so who is gonna pay? Is that gonna be part of this development application that they would be contributing to it? Or is it a DCC-funded? Maybe staff can explain whether funding may become from this light.
Certainly, Mr. Seff, yeah, Mr. Seffy, I know that would, those funding options would come to us at at the budget. If this passes, but perhaps he gives some enlightenment to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry for interrupting you, worship. Signalization typically, traffic signals are DCC-eligible and they're included in the DCC program. That said, your worship, whether we have the funding or not, as I said earlier, maybe I didn't make myself clear, it is not possible to install a signal at that location because of the fact that more dedication on the south side of sixty-second sixty-second Avenue would be needed to ultimately put the signal at its ultimate location. So I don't know if I answered the question or not, but it is a DCC item. It will be DCC-eligible.
So, your worship, why would we put it in the twenty-twenty-one budget if it's not possible to put a light there? That's
But that but that would come to council, all that information during the twenty-twenty-one budget deliberations. And council could then decide whether it would be moved forward to twenty-twenty-two or whatever the options are based on staff's recommendation. But right now, it's just the motion is just to put it there, and the staff will come back with more, you know, more detailed information and whether it's possible and or which budget would come out of.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and I just want to add in that we can't say at some point in the future, it's gonna happen. It's gonna be needed in the near future. So we have to get on with the planning for it. And working with Langley City will probably take some time to resolve.
Thank you. Okay, this time I'll call the question. All those in favor? And opposed? Carries unanimously. Okay, move on to E two. This is a development variance permit application. Samaru, it's two two, three, three, six, fiftieth Avenue. Could I have a motion, please? There's two options here. There's two options here. One is to move to authorize and one is to not authorize. So move to authorize. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Counsel Richter seconds. Discussion. Counsel Davis.
Thank you very much. Should this, is this something that should? Maybe maybe staff could explain. Isn't, wouldn't this be something that should go to the Board of Variants?
Sure, I'll ask Mr. Seffy. There's, I'm sure there's a reason it came here, but Mr. Seffy, if you can explain why it's in front of council, not Board of Variants.
Your worship, this is, I guess, arguably a hardship case. It it could, some some projects, some requests for variance can can be dealt with in a number of ways. One is, I guess, through staff as part of either existing powers or dedicated powers by council, by council themselves or through the Board of Variants. This, I guess, I haven't thought about this carefully or or otherwise spend that much time on it. It could have, I guess, gone to the Board of Variants because it's to do with what could, again, arguably be categorized as as compassionate grounds because of the fact that the reason for the variance is to accommodate an expansion of an existing building to accommodate an elderly member of immediate family. So it's in front of council. That's how the applicant has decided to to make the request or advance their case.
Okay, there's a, there's just, there's an awful lot of houses all over in Maryville there that would would you know, could change the lot, change the change the proposed lot coverage, you know, from thirty-five percent to forty. There's just an awful lot of them there, and I although I see the compassionate reasons here, there it gets, there is a point where just because, well, there's more to it than that. But yeah, I do, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Whitmarsh.
Yeah, thank you. This item, can you maybe question through your worship to staff? What is the current lot coverage by the house that's there right now? Like, I know it can go up to thirty-five percent. Are they at the max right now?
So, your worship, I just wanted to bring this slide up on the screen so council can take a look and see specifically what the application relates to. They are currently at their maximum thirty-five percent coverage. And if this was to be approved by council, it would it would take it to forty percent or just above forty forty percent coverage. And it would have an impact on the rear yard setback as well to be able to, as I said, build the expanded area to within four point one eight, four point one eight meters of of the rear property line.
Right, okay, so if yeah, like, so and and what I understand is that they're currently, this is a, this green square is actually their deck. So they're talking about turning their deck into to being part of the home, both on the first and second floor. Is that, is that correct? That it's about the same size as their current deck?
That's about correct. And again, just to go back, your worship, I was just reminded to take a look at the the background section of the report. Maybe I can just go back to the question being raised by Counsel Davis earlier. The Board of Variants did consider this application or a similar application, I guess, maybe not the same one, but similar application, and they denied it. But that goes back several years, goes back to twenty twelve. That's the the third paragraph on page seven, under the background and history section. But to respond to Counsel Whitmarsh's question, yes, it is approximately the same same size.
Okay. Now, I I mean, I have, I am having concerns for sure on this one, because there is, as I agree with Counselor Davis, there's lots of homes there right along that street that are all the same, and this seems to be a real precedent setting for that area, so I'm kind of concerned. All right, I'll listen to what others have to say.
Thank you. Counsel Richter.
I, if we look at the diagram that's in our report on page one, like the actual aerial photograph, it looks like on the, or to the west of this property, yes, there's there's a greenway there, and behind the property, there's multifamily going in there. So I can't see how covering the deck in would negatively impact the immediate neighbors. I I just don't see that impact because the, it's on the side of the walkway on the west, and the people behind are gonna be looking down into the backyard anyway. So I think this is kind of a one-off situation. I appreciated some of the comments in the report around the requirement for cultural reasons to accommodate family requirements. And I think that this can be accommodated in this situation. I don't think it's going to affect anybody else on that street just by virtue of the location that it's in. So that's why I'm supporting it. Thank you very much.
Counsel Ferguson.
So, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Oh, by the way, Counsel Kunst, your mic is still on. I do like your singing. It's refreshing. But if I, if I may, the, I've actually read this report. I've reread it. I've tried to do some research on it. And it it's it's interesting, the fact that this applicant has gone to staff and gone through the process. And that's admirable for the person. So many people and many counselors that have been on council a long time can can admit to or verify that so many people that go out and just do things, don't ask staff, don't follow our bylaws, just build things. And then after they've got it built, either ask for forgiveness or something else. This person has gone through that. There is some compassion compassionate grounds. As Counsel Whitmarsh has said as well, that I believe it was a deck that's gonna be covered and made into some kind of a dwelling unit. I think it, these, under COVID, under housing, under a lot of other things now today, we're gonna have to look at every application as they come forward and decide accordingly, depending on the location and and other things. It's just the the way of the world nowadays with the the cost of housing and the cost of families as they grow and age and compassionate grounds and otherwise. So I'm convinced that the applicant went through all the correct staff steps, met with staff, and it makes sense to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Arson.
Um, yes, thank you, worship. I agree with a number of the comments. I think primarily what struck me was the idea that overall some compassionate grounds were being put forward with a family member that needs to be housed. But I do have very serious concerns about the precedent that this would send. And I note that on our, later on the agenda, we have a housing action plan analysis that talks about what we need. But I'm concerned that if, in fact, Mr. Seffy has pointed out that there was an initial, although some time ago rejection of this by the Board of Variants, that we are now reconsidering more or less what, what they have stated in the past. So I do have reservations about that. And I wonder how we are then, if others has, has been indicated, if there's a need and others come before us, are we going to just adjudicate these one by one based on the facts of the case when there could be an awful lot of people, not just in that neighborhood, but many neighborhoods who would like to do the same thing. So those are my concerns.
Thank you. Mr. Seffy, just to clarify, the Board of Variants, did they review this particular application? And turn it down? Or was it an application similar to this in twenty twelve?
Thank you, worship. It was an application similar to this.
Okay, it wasn't. All right, thank you. All right, Counsel Long.
Yeah, thank you, worship. So the fact is, if it had gone to the Board of Variants and been denied, council would not be allowed to reconsider. Is that not the case? Let's get that clear first. We can't overturn a Board of Variance decision.
That's correct, your worship. The process requires, if an application had been made to the Board of Variants and rejected, the application cannot come back in the same sort of way, shape and form for appeal, so to speak. It has to be significantly different for council to, to, to consider or for another body to consider that, that application. And again, if you look at the wording, your worship, in the background and history section, it wasn't for the subject property, but rather for two other properties, single families to the west of the subject site.
Yeah, so there were, there were different properties, but they were denied. So that, that's an issue. I suppose if, if we, we could actually refer this to the Board of Variants, is that possible?
I don't know if we could. I think this, if.
It's up to the proponent.
We would, yeah, it'll be up to them. We can't refer.
The other thing is. So the other, I mean, there's a number of concerns, but what about, there's no public information meeting because of the COVID. We've dropped that requirement. So how do we know how the neighborhood's going to feel about it? And I do appreciate Counsel Richter's remarks that seeing how its location next to, it looks like a right of way. But I wonder how it would affect the, the building that's, that's being constructed to the south? And how would we consult with the neighborhood, should council wish to?
Well, your worship, the, the process has, has only slightly modified in terms of COVID, in the context of COVID. And what I mean by that is we still do the advertising in public notification process. That all continues seeking affected area residents in the case of that development variance permit being those immediately adjacent to the subject site to provide comments for council to consider. And as I understand it, the clerk, correct me if I'm wrong, there have been no submissions received from the public. So it still provides for input. It's just not in person.
So it is, we have definitely sent out notices to the neighborhood and we have had no responses.
That's correct.
That's correct. And then my, my last question is, when you showed the, the map that showed the, the lot, it stated that it was four point one eight meters from the property line. What is the normal setback for that area? So, so we're talking about two things in my mind. One is the addition and the lot coverage, but the other is, is there a variance to the setback as well?
There is.
Yes, your worship, the, the setback variance is from six meters to four meters or approximately twenty feet to approximately thirty feet, thirteen feet.
So, so the, so the designated setback is six meters? In that whole neighborhood?
Well, for that particular zone.
Oh, yes, okay. And now the, the, the request on this is to go to four point one eight. So it's slightly less than than two meter adjustment. Is that right?
That's correct.
Thanks, your worship.
Thank you. Counsel Whitmarsh.
Yeah, thanks. Just for further clarification, when I look at the, the plans for the property to the south, immediately it's a single family home that looks like it angles in so that the, the corner of the single family home that's coming in there is fairly close and looking into this person's backyard. So I, I, it isn't, doesn't look like it's multifamily. It looks like it's single family. I just wanted to confirm that that's correct. Right now, that drawing that we have there shows an empty lot, but then in our package, it shows four houses being developed on two, two, three, zero, six. And one of them's on an angle that it basically has its backyard looking, back house looking into the back of this property that we're, the subject property. So that's one thing I wanted to confirm. And secondly, I wanted to also ask about, i- if there is an expansion to the home, is that that preclude them from also then turning, also adding a deck? I'm, I'm assuming that then the deck will be gone and there won't be a deck, a deck added because if we're down to four meters and they now add a two meter deck on it, I'm concerned about that. So is there something in there that says that if we do allow this, that they can't add any deck to the back? Maybe, maybe staff could help with those two questions.
Thank you, your worship. In terms of the first question, to the immediate south of the subject property, as you can see on the screen, your worship, there are single family lots being proposed that in fact are part of the overall development of the area where my picture is showing right now. So it's, it's single family immediately to the south and adjacent to the single family to essentially mirror what's happening to the, to the east. And then on the other side of this road is, is what you might refer to as, as multifamily. And as far as construction is concerned, the setback would apply to any construction that would include a deck. So if a variance was to be approved, that would not allow for an additional deck to be constructed in addition to the expanded area.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I see no further hands up for questions. So I'm going to call the question, all those in favor. And that's to endorse and opposed. Counsel Whitmarsh, Counsel Arson, Counsel Woodward, Counsel Davis opposed. The motion carries. Thank you. We want to E three and this proposed twenty twenty one council calendar. Hope everyone had a chance to take a look at that. And could I have a motion, please? Counsel Whitmarsh moves. Counsel Arson seconds discussion. Seeing, oh, Counsel Woodward.
Yeah, I just had a couple of questions about this, maybe Mr. Mayor or the staff. We seem to be endorsing remaining in Zoom structure meetings. Now, whether we're in Zoom or not, we seem to be endorsing the fact that we're going to stick with the the one P M start time, then special closed, then public hearings. And, and I think I kind of want to have a discussion around, around whether we stick with that and maybe revert back to special closed afternoon and then evening meetings. Because if we're going to be in this for another year, we're endorsing a council calendar to stay in that format. I actually don't think that format's actually working very well. So when we first decided to go to that in the state of emergency, this looks like a state of emergency that's kind of just remaining around forever, at least for the indefinite near future. So whatever that timeline is, I would like to discuss, at least, and if nobody else wants to, that's fine. At least discuss going back to the, the original format of having special closed meetings prior to the public agenda, which I think we're seeing today as easy and slightly bit of an issue. And, and then having the proper evening meeting at seven P M like we used to for engagement with the public and the public hearing at the same time. So I, I don't really support continuing for another calendar year in this meeting structure. And I'll see if others agree or disagree. I don't have a problem with the calendar dates, but I, I think we're endorsing on the calendar the regular evening meeting label starting at one P M. And I don't really want to continue with that structure. I don't find that it's working very well. And the previous three meeting structure to me was, was much better. Thanks.
Thank you. I'm going to ask Ms. Bauer to give some explanation. I know we are still in a state of emergency in the province of British Columbia, so these would still follow. I would anticipate that if the state of emergency or when it, I shouldn't say if, it will be lifted at some point in time that we would, that this calendar would be revisited and we would certainly, I would certainly want to go back to the way it was. But Ms. Bauer, maybe you can provide some insight in, in the state. Right now, I know you're in touch with many other municipalities and, and what they're doing. And perhaps you can help council understand where we're going. But it does not, if this is approved today, it doesn't mean that at the point that the state of emergency is lifted that we can't go back to.
I'd like to clarify, Mr. Mayor, then my suggestion, if I may. I'm, I'm suggesting we switch back to the old format while still in a state of emergency. I no longer support just proceeding as we are, just because it was the state of emergency around COVID numbers. I would like to revert back to the old form regardless of the state of emergency.
Okay, okay. I'll ask Ms. Bauer just to get some clarification. And then I, I think that could certainly be entertained by amendment of council wanting to go that way. Ms. Bauer.
Yes, Ms. Mayor, you are correct. My intent is that if we can move back into something more similar to our previous world, that we would bring the calendar back for council discussion. This would be strictly as a, if we were still in the emergency situation we're in. The intent with the calendar is to make it as easy as possible for two things. One is for people to be able to watch online. As, as you know, in our previous version, we had the challenge of individuals didn't know when council was going to come back from the closed meeting in the afternoon. And that made it difficult to know when to turn in, when to tune into your, your computer. So in this case, we have a definite start time of one P M. And we do start the meeting then. And it's easier for individuals to, to know with some consistency. The moving of the agenda items from the afternoon or from the evening meeting to the afternoon meeting is strictly to ensure that I have enough space in the council chamber should we have a public hearing. As you know, some people do choose to come in and watch. And with the current advisement, we would have to ensure there was a half hour between the evening meeting and the count, the public hearing meeting in order to give those here for the, or the evening meeting time to leave and the people for the public hearing time to show up. Again, that presents a challenge in that we're not too sure exactly when the public hearing starts, when we have our regular schedule. So I'm just trying to ensure we have enough space for the evening for the public hearing. We don't have holdovers. As you know, we can only allow so many in the theater at any one time. And to ensure that everyone has the start time that is consistent so that they can watch. So again, the public hearing is now webcast due to the, the COVID situation. So I want to make sure that people can be able to tune in at exactly seven o'clock to see the items they wish.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Bauer. Okay, I'll move on to Counsel Richter.
Yes, well, contrary to Counselor Woodward, I actually think the new format's working pretty good. I have no problems with it. I'm happy to hear from the township clerk that we'll certainly move back into the previous four, or previous standards that are set under a procedure by law as soon as the state of emergency is lifted. And I also think on a positive note, the announcement that Pfizer said today that they have a vaccine that's proving to be ninety percent effective is very good news for the entire world. And I think we may be in a situation where we can go back to the way things used to be sooner than we perhaps thought we would. So I'm all for staying with this plan until such time as the state of emergency is lifted. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counsel Ferguson.
Yeah, I was cut through. I'm not sure, Counsel Woodward, whether I agree to disagree to agree. So that's where we are right now. I, I did bring it up a number of meetings ago about how soon we would be meeting face to face again. I do appreciate that some members of council are a little bit concerned and nervous about that. I also appreciate the comments made earlier about the fact there is a vaccine that may indeed be effective, for which many of us would be jumping to get. So I'm, I'm with some folks that want to meet sooner than later, but I do appreciate the concerns of other counselors not jumping into it too soon. And if we continue too long, I was considering, and maybe Counselor Davis, maybe I should maybe go on a little the ball book or something, maybe shaving my hair off and doing a little bit of that. But anyway, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Long.
Yeah, just to continue on what Counsel Woodward's brought forward, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, staff, but I mean, we're suggesting that the one o'clock meeting be the beginning of a regular meeting. Now, we can go in camera anytime during that meeting. So the calendar is not specifying that a regular meeting starts at one and we go in camera at four or three or seven or five, or not seven, it would have to be around five. This would allow us to go into camera anytime. And I don't know why we wouldn't do as Counselor Woodward is suggesting, perhaps go in camera right away. And as Ms. Bauer has said, but we'd like to give some certainty when the folks can tune in. Why wouldn't we go in camera and say we must finish by four o'clock? And if we don't, then we adjourn and maybe we have to meet afterwards, go back into in camera. It might encourage us to be slightly more efficient with our meetings, but this, this wouldn't preclude that. Am I correct? If we start the meeting at one o'clock, we can go into special closed right away, which I think I might agree with Counsel Woodward might be better. And then go into the public or the regular meeting at four P M or three thirty or whatever time council decides.
Ms. Bauer.
No, it wouldn't preclude that. It would just take a, a change to the agenda, which of course council can do.
Right.
That's still.
So in other words, endorsing this calendar still allows for what Counsel Woodward is proposing, that we might change when we go into in camera and when we don't. So that's, yeah, that's good to hear. And now there's, there's a public hearing scheduled almost every night. What happens if there isn't public hearing material? Do we have a regular meeting? Are we able to have a regular meeting at seven P M? Or what's the situation there?
If we're done, you get to go home and have dinner.
Okay.
Or you are home. You get to have dinner at home. I get to go home and have dinner.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Whitmarsh.
Yeah, I, I, I certainly can see that there could be some advantages to make an adjustment as Counsel Woodward has suggested. However, overall, I think it's probably been okay. I don't think that these Zoom meetings and that are ideal in any sense of the word. So to me, we're, we're living with the situation as, as given to us. I'm happy to stay with it the way it is. I do like that we provide consistency to the public on when meetings start. I think that's always been a bit of a frustration for me is that the public never knew when the afternoon meeting was actually going to start. So I do want that, that consistency. And if that's one o'clock, that's great. If we'd rather remove it and say, like Counsel Long has suggested, it's always going to be at four o'clock. I'm fine with that. I just think we need to provide that consistency. So for now, I'm happy to stay with what we have until things change and we can be face to face and move in a different format.
Thank you. Counsel Davis.
Yes, thank you. I, I actually, I, it gets, I think Mr. Beckham will tweak it as we go along anyhow, as we, there are times when there's no, nothing on the public hearing, so he cancels it. And, you know, we have that ability to. The other thing is in September, we don't go back till September. And that seems like an awful lot of, like, we break for the month of August. And then, you know, the last couple of meetings are kind of full and then we don't go back right. And I just wonder, is the L G, not the L G M. Anyhow, September seems to be, but I, you know what? I guess we can fill it up. I mean, it's, it's, it's you, you, they only have so much flexibility there. So if they fill, they can change things around. This is, this is the COVID thing. Actually, I don't, I don't like the meetings here in my own home because well, it's, I like, I like them in person meetings a lot better, but also safety. It, oh, Jason went in right out the other ear. Well, anyhow, I, I think we'll just, we can change it. I mean, as soon as we get an emergency, we can go back. I actually don't mind starting at one o'clock because it's always one o'clock. And it's a consistency thing for me too. And if we, if we shut down earlier and we're at home, I mean, it, it, all we gotta do is wait till seven o'clock. Everything's consistent. Thank you.
We want to make sure you're here. That's why September, later in September. All right. Anybody want to add anything or any other motions on this? I don't see any hands. Someone call a question, all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, opposed. Counsel Woodward's opposed. The motion carries. Thank you. Move to E four, Salmon River flooding mitigation efforts on Forty Third Avenue. I, I'd like to first of all, thank staff for this thorough report. It was a very well, a very good report. The motion is that we confirm the practice that's in place right now. And it was a great report. It shows what they're doing. It really enlightened me. So if I can have a motion. Counsel Whitmarsh, Second Counsel Davis and Counsel Richter.
Yes, thank you very much. I too agree. It was a, a good report. I was very surprised to learn that we've spent four hundred thousand dollars to date on flood mitigation on this small stretch of road. And that in order to fix it so that the existing problems don't continue, we need to spend two point five million to raise the level of the road as well as put a higher bridge in. And this is all because of. And this is all because of some beavers. And it seems to me that the biggest problem is the private landowners have not agreed to enter into an SRW agreement with the township. That's at the bottom of page two in the report. So I'm I'm wondering if we should reach out to the neighbors and say, you know, your taxes are going to go up because we're going to have to spend 2.5 million to raise the road and raise the bridge when you could just give us authorization to go in and remove these beavers because it's the beavers that are causing it. And we're working around the beavers and I don't think spending this amount of money is working effectively around the beavers. So I would have that question for staff. And the other question that I have for staff is the $50,000 that cited in here for an additional study. Would that $50,000 include reaching out and talking to the neighbors? Because I think if the neighbors understood the magnitude of the costs here, maybe they'd be a bit more willing to let township come onto the property to try to remove the beavers or their, and or their dams. So those are my two questions. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Seifi?
Thank you, Your Worship. I guess, Your Worship, in terms of the costs, the $50,000, the intent would be to complete a feasibility, discussing issues with, with property owners and making sure that they understand the ramifications or their options, the implications, the need for the township to work, I guess, on a comprehensive basis as opposed to one-off. All of those things are not part of what township typically township staff come to council and ask for, for funding for. So this will be part and parcel of our of our normal operations. The $50,000 would be for us to actually complete a feasibility level design and analysis for what is estimated to cost significantly between one and $2 million. And that would be to raise the section of the road that actually could be the ravine of Salmon River. As far as the actual cost, the $400,000 over the past number of years, decade or so, the bulk of it relates to replacement of a culvert. And that was $300,000. The culvert was replaced. And the rest were just, I guess, other types of reviews and cleanup efforts. And as far as the, I guess, the issue is concerned, it is not just the two property owners, but rather downstream, Your Worship, if I can share the screen again one more time. And just refer to this area that is downstream. And as you can see, it is essentially the federal government's Department of National Defense lands. And, and that has several interconnected water courses and ravines. And I can appreciate, or as you can appreciate, and I would imagine lots and lots of wildlife and beaver activity. So it would be difficult for, for, I guess, us to make any kind of a confirmation or guarantee that once in this particular area, that's once we have, that once we have secured the right of way or the ability to access and maintain a certain piece of the water course, the main stem of Salmon River, that the issues will no longer prevail and that the, there won't be any additional flooding. The only way that that could be, I guess, guaranteed, if you can take that in quotation marks, that would be to actually raise, to provide a physical barrier for the water to to no longer overtop the road. And that would be the $2 million expenditure to raise the road in this general area here where my cursor is showing.
Okay, but again, it comes back to is there not another way to solve this problem than spending 2.5 million dollars of taxpayer money to raise a road? Like, there must be another solution we can look at here. And maybe the solution is to inform the landowners, including if these are federal lands, I don't understand why they wouldn't let us go in there and try to solve a, a problem that affects the health and safety of the people that live on this road because they can't trans, they can't transverse it in the wet weather because it's flooded. It, I don't know, it just seems the numbers are out of reach here, in my opinion. Let's just get rid of the beavers. And I don't think we need a right of way to get rid of the beavers.
Thank you. Counselor Long?
Yeah, we can, we can take the beavers to Kent. I remember that, that was a motion once it went to LMLGA. It didn't go very far. No, okay. So seriously now, which way does the Salmon River flow? Is it from the east to the west, right?
That's correct, yes.
And the DND lands are immediately west of the, of the, of the 272nd Street. So I don't understand why we couldn't reach out to the DND folks. Do you know that the CEF 192 that are occupying a good portion of the, the radio station there, they are engineers. This is actually part of what they, they do. They're, they're engineers. So I'm wondering what effect we've had in, in reaching out to the officer in charge perhaps or to the to the unit itself and say, look, can you help us to mitigate this problem? Perhaps they could build a lake. I don't, I know with environmental issues, you know, there's so many things you can't do, I suppose, but I mean, they could increase their wetlands somewhere on that DND land and, and remove the dams that have shown. I don't know if it's on this slide. It doesn't appear to be obvious to me on this slide, but it seemed to me on the other slide showed a couple of three beaver dams on the DND lands. Have we not been successful in reaching out to them? And if not, maybe we should increase our efforts in that regard?
Thank you, Your Worship. I guess the, the simplest way of putting it is that we have and we will continue to, to seek collaboration, not just by the federal government, but also private property owners. I have Mr. Larson here with me in the office and he's assured me that him and his staff have approached the private property owners as well as the DND. And even though the Department of National Defense have an active beaver management program and consultants that will assist or have assisted them and continue to assist them. I think it's a question of their inability to keep up with, with the size and, and the level of activity by beavers. It's really just a matter of simply not being practically possible to keep up with the size of the property that they have and how much activity in terms of wildlife is going on there. Just lack of resources. So this is just a reality. I'm not, I guess, being pessimistic. We will continue to try and, and and work with them and others to try and, and address this issue. But I don't think it's, it would be realistic to say that, that by us accepting responsibility for maintaining all of the water courses that the problem will go away.
Okay, I appreciate that. But I will be seeing the OIC on Remembrance Day, so I'll certainly mention to him from a physically distanced range of concern. And I suppose really what Mr. Seifi just said is what the recommendation is, that we continue with the current practice to work with the private landowners. Because I agree with Counselor Richter, why, why would we want to put millions into building a bridge? Where perhaps increasing the flow of the water courses, to me seems the most logical or more logical method of mitigating this flood. So I guess I agree with the report and, but I think we should step up efforts, perhaps others on council if they, if they want to reach out to well, however that works. I will certainly talk to the OIC from the radio station in the next couple of days. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Ferguson?
Well, I think certainly an awful lot's being said. I mean, if, if there's an opportunity, as we've always said, to explore other options and get, save some money on behalf of our residents and also look at other things, either from the Canadian Forests base or the neighbors or, or other means. That's, that's the course we should be taking. And I did want to say, is there any possibility, if I may through the Chair to Staff, I'm not an expert of alluring the beavers or trapping them through other means without going on to the property, if I may?
Ms. Seifi?
No, no, Your Worship, it is, it is, I guess, an inherent part of the, part of the requirement of the process to enter the property to be able to determine what, what I guess mitigating measure or, or, or measure that would address is required. That, that is, the first step is a visual inspection. That allows you to consider, as I said, a progressive series of steps that could be taken, but it requires as, as part of it a visual inspection which requires presence on the site.
Okay, thank you. Well, it's important to note, if there's any opportunity, it's been mentioned already, either through a future rapport or some action items, I think that would certainly go an awful long way.
Thank you, Counselor Anderson.
Yes, thank you, Worship. And I also appreciated the report. And I thought it created a good context for what's going on. So I had a question regarding the $50,000 for the study and the budget process. Because it seems to me that we have already done to the magnitude of what we're currently able to do a lot in our multi-pronged approach and there are limitations. So I'm wondering if staff has looked into getting some help with the budget items because eventually whether or not it's because of the beavers or precipitation flows that are heavier, whatever it is, if the bridge in fact is too low based on when it was built, it might be the case that we should be looking for partnering arrangements through the federal government because I was reading they have about $2 billion. And I wonder if some of that could be used because it's for hazard risk and to address climate mitigation. So I just wondered if we'd looked into that.
Your Worship, did you want me to respond?
Yeah, please. Thank you.
I guess it really depends on, on what area we are, we are talking about, Your Worship. What staff has included, the discussions in the report relate to improvements on Forty Third Avenue. There is currently no bridge along that section of road. There is a culvert that was replaced in 2011. There is a bridge, however, on 272nd Street, crossing 272nd Street. That bridge is in good condition. However, as part of a larger study, it may be determined that that bridge has to be replaced to allow more flow or maybe provide for a, an increased, I guess, volume of, of flow from the east to the west. The bridge itself is, is in good condition based on last assessment.
Thank you. Counselor Davis?
Thank you. You know, this, these beaver, sorry, my darn other phone's ringing. I can't get it right now. The, you know, we've, we've spent a lot, we can spend a lot of money raising roads and, and building bridges. I mean, we, we just two years ago, we, on Seventy Second in there by Walls Place this summer, the whole month of August at 216th. And by the way, the beavers have moved in at 216th down here and raised the water four feet. And, and if we hadn't have put that nice huge culvert in, they wouldn't have a nice place to make their hutch. I'm wondering sometimes we, it's really, really hard. And we, we learned this years ago with the trying to go in and get a covenants to clean out to clean out and getting the covenants to clean out along a creekside is really hard. There's certain people will say, oh, no problem. And other people will say, no, I'm not going to give you permission at all. And that one person that doesn't give you permission, oh, brother, sorry. I'm not organized. So anyhow, my point is, you know, maybe if we did remove a few beavers and we've done that, I don't know if we are allowed to do it in certain areas, but in, you know, we can't have a beaver dam underneath 216th here and we can't have a beaver dam in that culvert that was replaced in 2011. You know, we, sometimes beavers get pretty eager and they, you know, they'll go where they think they need to. So I just wonder, it's a good report, but I just wonder if we need to, maybe it's cheaper maybe to spend a little bit of money trapping them than it is to and getting them. And I don't know if you relocate them. I think you need to trap them, but yeah, okay. Thank you.
And just to reiterate, there is a policy at council's approved regarding beaver management. And so it's done as minimally as possible. And it's lots of, we've gone, we've had some extensive reports on that and there's a policy that they follow. Counselor Richter?
Thanks.
Yeah, I just want to pick up on the point that Counselor Davis has raised because I think it's a good one. And I wonder if a lot of these property owners balk because what we've been requiring up to my knowledge, what we have been requiring is a permanent statutory right of way, not a temporary statutory right of way. And so I'd like to ask Mr. Seifi, if I could, through you, Mr. Mayor. Is that what we've asked these, did we ask these landowners for a temporary right of way or a permanent one? And if we ask for a permanent one, should we be thinking about adjusting our policy to look for temporary ones that would just give us enough time to go in and remove the dam or remove the beavers or both?
Thank you, Your Worship. Forgive me for not looking to you to give me the permission to speak, Your Worship. I'm just jumping in, hoping that you will tell me to.
Yes, yeah, go ahead.
It, it's a good thought. However, in practice, Your Worship, it doesn't work because of the need for ongoing maintenance, ongoing responsibilities that private property owners will not necessarily be able to or have the, the ability, the training, the knowledge, the equipment to be on top of on an ongoing basis. So while yes, on a given year, it may be possible for, for staff to go and take a look and remove a beaver dam on an ongoing basis. Once we have it part of our program, we can then monitor on an ongoing basis. And these things that you can appreciate are not static. They are very much fluid and dynamic in nature because of the, the fact that whether it's wildlife or whether it's debris, whether it's weather related, whether it's, you know, whatever that might be, or actually even manmade obstacles or obstructions of the flow. It has to be part of an ongoing monitoring and part of an ongoing program for us to be able to manage and control.
Okay, well, I, I just want to suggest, Mr. Mayor, to you and the rest of council, that this permanent statutory right of way is what's causing the problem here. Because most landowners aren't going to want to give a permanent statutory right of way. And so while I appreciate Mr. Seifi's comments about the need for us to have a works program, we wouldn't be sending people out every year to look at beaver dams that have been cleared up. We could send them out every two or three years and wouldn't a statutory work, a temporary statutory work just as well for that as a, as a permanent one. So the problem here is we have, in my opinion, we have a policy that's resulting in us having to spend millions of dollars to solve what could be a very easy fix. And it's all because of this permanent statutory right of way. I think we should be revisiting that policy. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Ferguson?
Mayor, I was wondering if we could, as part of this report or even, I don't know if you need a motion or a direction to staff. I know Counselor Richter has mentioned some steps or some items that could be looked at, either contacting the neighbors. And Counselor Long has also mentioned the fact that talking to the officer in charge or the federal government, and staff can do that as well. And come back with perhaps, maybe the military's got ways of getting rid of beavers. But the thing is, I think there is an opportunity here for staff to see the direction of council and perhaps come back with trying, trying it out one more try and looking at other options. If I, if I may through the chair to to either you or to the administrator, is that possible?
Well, I think so. I think the, with reports, as the staff are already doing that, this is just confirming the practice there. I think it's ongoing, what they're doing. They're not relaxing. They're still working towards getting these agreements. And, and this basically we're confirming that that practice is what we'd like to see. And that's in the report. So it's already embedded in there. And I believe by just adopting this, we're confirming that we want them to continue to work with neighbors, continue to look for rights of way. Certainly, I think staff can take back some of the comments on, on temporary ones. That works. It's, it's, there's a lot of other complications, but Mr. Beckham's nodding his head that that's an idea that he, he will certainly take back. So. I believe it's embedded in the, in the report, so it's already there, but it's good comments, thank you. Okay, I don't see any further questions, so I'm going to call the question. All those in favor? Anybody opposed?
I'm opposed.
Counsel Richter's opposed, the motion carries, thank you. And we go to E five, this is the Housing Needs Report and Action Plan, there's a motion to receive, and then direct staff, a couple of directions for staff, and approve the terms of reference, could I have a motion, please? That's Arnison, secondar. Have a secondar, Counsel Kunst. Any discussion? A great report, lots of reading, Counsel Woodward?
Just want to clarify, this is only received for the moment.
No, we've got, there's the entire motion, yeah. What you see in front of you, that's just being moved.
I'd like to move division of that.
Sure.
I'd like to divide the first part from the second and third, not each individually.
Certainly, I will ask, is there a secondar for division? Counsel Richter, let's call the question, show of hands, all those in favor of division, opposed, carries. Okay, do you wish to speak, and in, because time is short, speak to any part, if anybody wants to speak to any part of this, we'll do it as one. I see no speakers, so on receipt, I'll call the question, all those in favor, opposed, carried. And the second part, Counsel Woodward?
Yeah, so second and third part, yeah, I just wanted another, I just wanted to defer this for one meeting and see if other people object to that before moving it. One hundred and seventy-two pages, you know, I'll carefully, I'll freely admit that I have not had a chance to go over all one hundred and seventy-two pages. Staff have had this for, I don't know how long, I've had this for three days. And an important issue, so before I endorse the terms of reference, I did want to have a chance to go over the report more thoroughly and potentially get some questions to staff over the next week or ten days before endorsing a terms of reference for an action.
We move deferral to the next meeting?
Yep.
Secondar, Counsel Long seconds it. So you know, for the discussion, I'll call the question, all those in favor? Opposed, carries, okay, move on to E six, Fort Langley Outdoor Pool Replacement Update. And this is to endorse the public engagement strategies, there's a lot more work that has to go on, so this is, Counsel Woodward?
Yeah, I just have to declare a conflict on this item.
I'll, I'll give you a moment. Put you in the conflict of interest room. All right, I will now ask for a motion. Counsel Whitmarsh, secondar, Counsel Kunst, Counsel Richter?
Yes, thank you very much for this report. It did take longer than I had hoped, and I'm glad we're going to put more public engagement and around the options. But I think it's wrong for us to give them just the five options that are now in the report, and I think we should allow them to come up with options as well. So I'm wondering if we could add in, and I'll wait for the discussion before I make a motion on this, Mr. Mayor, if that's okay. I think we should add an, add other as an option for the public to consider when we take it out to them, thank you.
Thank you. Just a question for staff, and on that, during a public engagement, is it automatically allow for comments and people to come up with other ideas? Is that something that's standard, or would this motion be helpful?
Thank you, your worship, that's part of the standard, to provide an area for comments beyond what the specific questions are.
Okay, great, so it's there. Okay, thank you, Counsel.
Okay, well, just as a follow-up then, Mr. Mayor, if I might, the in other situations, when public comes up with different options, and we've only given like four, or five, or six different options, do we actually move on the public's options, or do we just go back, or does staff just go back to the original options that went to the public?
We got to council, Mr. Safi, comment?
Your worship, typically, when council authorizes a a public engagement process and and approve the terms of reference in terms of how to engage the public, then we will provide a report back to council before any further steps are taken as to what the public response has been.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Arnison?
Yes, thank you, worship. I entirely agree with Counselor Richter. I had that we should really put very specifically and in exactly the same format that this would be my recommendation or thought to staff, that if we are doing public engagement, that the public knows for sure that when they have an opportunity to write their comments, that they are going to be equally considered. So I know there's no costing involved with that, and so we'd have to have some follow-up, but I just really strongly recommend that we have this, so I'm going to support that as an option, even though we currently, you know, do that apparently in a little area where people can write their comments.
Thank you. I think staff can take that as direction, certainly they can put wording in there that reflects what council's asking.
Okay, thank you.
It'll be very difficult for them. Counsel Davis? Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. One thing that I did, I guess I've made my feelings, I like my little Fort Langley pool, but when we put in the option one, two, three, four, five, option one, not recommended, option two, not recommended, option three, not recommended, option four is recommended for a spray park. But they threw in another option, five, which makes it a four-lane pool, twenty-five-meter pool. I am concerned that that is, and I think Mr. Winslade alluded to that. Well, no, you know what, I'm going to back up. I think that staff maybe felt that if we start to give everybody an option, pretty soon there'll be, it'll be an indoor pool, and it'll be a twenty-five-million-dollar pool, and we kind of go for a ride with that. And we don't want to do that, we, but something else that's just come to mind is my computer went dead when we were talking about the Fort Langley Cemetery. Do, do, do we, two things. The one of one, do we own the cemetery owns the parking lot? Was that correct?
Township owns the parking lot.
Okay, the township owns it.
The parks, under parks, which is.
So it's not necessarily, it could be used for the both, could it?
I believe counsel could could approve that. Mr. Safi?
Sorry, I just wanted to clarify what was said earlier, and that was simply the fact that the parking lot forms part of the legal boundaries of the cemetery parcel.
Okay, so it's part of the cemetery.
Okay, but, okay, because that could be dicey. Okay, the other thing is, this caretaker's house is, is that because I, I'm being a bit cheeky here, but we got seven-point-five million there. Is, and it doesn't say, it says here, I E structures for change rooms, washrooms, public chemical storage. Does that, does anybody know, hey, this is way too early to ask this question, but we're not talking about putting a new caretaker's house in. You know, like, you know, I know we got to fix the whole thing, but it's like, I'm just concerned that this is going to go, it's going to be a little bit go sideways, and because it kind of sometimes does, and so anyhow, just some, just some comments, I know it's real early, but I absolutely want to endorse sending this back to getting feedback. And, but I'm concerned that when the feedback goes out, they're going to have one, one versus the other, like maybe.
But that's a discussion for later, yeah.
Yeah, like the spray park versus the new, the seven-point-five-million-dollar pool, I'm worried that that's that's the only thing they're going to think that is on the piece of paper. Okay, thank you.
Just endorse the engagement strategy, yeah, thanks. Counselor Ferguson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's interesting, I just, first of all, I just wanted to ask for clarification through the chair, Mr. Mayor, to staff. Now, this report came out of the fact that there was a either a motion or a resolution of council to get more feedback, if that's the first question, if I may.
That's correct.
Okay.
This came from council.
Hey, good, it came from council, so we'd already made a decision, now we're coming back, and I think that's good, that we've had a second sober look at this thing. And as members of council have already mentioned, the fact that it's good for us to get some more public input on this. Myself included, maybe jumped too fast on what we're going to do with either spray park or another apparatus or something in the area. I think that having other comments and other ideas, including some members of the public were wishing or suggested fundraising on behalf of citizens, which is always a good thing. Obviously, it's hard to fundraise the millions of dollars, but it's something the little town that did, so to speak, so I think this is a good report, I think public engages is important, and I think that the folks of Fort Langley will probably have come up with some great ideas, and I'm looking forward to the process. Well, thanks, staff, thank yourself, Mr. Mayor, for this process, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Richter?
Yes, I was wondering too, perhaps the, one of the issues here that's impacting the concern in the community is the need to have some more youth programs, particularly for that, say, ten-to-seventeen-year-old age group. And maybe making programs available in the Fort Langley community hall would go a long way to decreasing the need for a big fancy pool there, and I'm hopeful that people, when they make suggestions, will give consideration to other things that could be put in place to help that age, that particular age group in Fort Langley, so thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so you know, further discussion, I'll call Counsel Long.
Yeah, thanks, your worship. Sorry, my hand went up and down, up and down, I was going to not say anything, but I guess I'm going to follow up on what Counsel Davis says, so if the, because I only really see two options, I'm sorry, either you build a spray park or you build a seven-million-dollar pool, because you've been down there, right? I mean, my neighbor's pool is bigger than that pool, so you're not going to spend three million building a tiny pool again, I think you're going to be, the public. So anyway, so the question, how do you worship, is that it did say in that option that they would deconstruct the caretaker's suite, but they would have to create a new one then under that option, so that option really is, is it seven-point-five million, or is it more like eight million or nine million?
Can I ask staff, Mr. Safi, otherwise, it's just, we're just basically asking for public engagement, so, Mr. Safi, can you clarify on that one option?
It's going to be presented that option, though, isn't it?
Yeah.
It's not accurate if it's going to be a caretaker's suite required, too.
Yeah, they can clarify that, I think staff can clarify that when it goes, if you clarify now, be clarified when it goes public consultation.
Thank you, your worship. I guess overall, staff was not planning on removing any of the options in terms of the presentation and engagement of the public. If council wishes staff to remove any of the options, which has not been, I guess, what's been voiced so far by members of council, we can certainly do that, remove any of the options that council feels is really not practical. So at this point, what we're taking from council discussion is that we should allow for specifically additional options that the public, members of public, may actually come up with, beyond just providing for commentary. As far as the caretaker's area is concerned, there will not be a need for a caretaker's area if we were to go down the path of the option number five, I think it is, which is the most expensive option. So there won't be a need for the caretaker's area as far as that option.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'll call the question, all those in favor? And opposed, carries unanimously, if we can ask Counsel Woodward back in. Okay, we're all back. So we'll move to E seven, and this is reopening W C Blair Recreation Centre Pool Update. And the township of Langley is reopening a W C Blair Recreation Centre, effective by COVID-nineteen, include here and be received by council. And maybe I'll just ask Mr. Backen to provide a bit of background, and it's certainly a moving situation with the updates from Dr. Henry and from the province. And, you know, at what time this could be opened at the earliest, and what are the steps in light of the new regulations that have come in? Mr. Backen?
Thank you, your worship, it certainly is an evolving issue. Right now, what the report suggests is that we're looking at November the twenty-third for an opening, and likely that would be at the earliest, and we say likely because we're in a bit of a challenge right now, we're getting more concerned staff about the current state of events and current state of the emergency. And we'll have to be very, I guess, cautious to make sure that those concerns are addressed as we go forward. We certainly want to proceed, but we're just sensitive to the fact, for example, in the civic facility, a number of people would prefer to work from home, for example, so we know that sensitivity is growing. So this is the first of our facilities that we are bringing, aquatic facilities are bringing back online, and this report simply tries to show the timeline and the process.
You muted Mayor Foes, but I guess I'll move the report, is that the idea?
Yes, that is, thank you, Counsel Long moves it, and secondar, second, Counsel Arnison, discussion, Counsel Richter?
Yes, I just wanted to bring to council's attention that today's total COVID cases for the last forty-eight hours are a thousand with five new deaths, so things are not improving out there.
Thank you for that. Counsel Ferguson?
Yeah, I just wanted to continue with what the, or ask the administrator, you know, what are you recommending under, maybe you might want to chime in too, Mr. Mayor, what are you recommending under these new, just two-week and other concerns as mentioned by other council, if I may through the chair?
Mr. Backen, basically what this report is, that staff will continue to look at reopenings, but they're also taking into consideration all of the rulings that are coming down, and when we can earliest do it, and how safe we could do it. But Mr. Backen, if you could provide some more detail on that.
That's correct, your worship. As you may recall, this motion actually originated from council as to the subsequent ones, and we're very sensitive to the need to address the policy concerns that are out there and the impact it's having on the population itself, so we certainly understand the sentiment. As to the question, I guess I would say that the 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 process forward can change very quickly, as was just referenced, daily now, we're getting new information, and and sometimes it's very difficult to interpret what that information means, so for example, we know we'll call the increased socialization's a concern, so that means whichever facility we operate, we've got to be very careful in terms of the number and the social distancing, and to ensure that, that there's no one witnessing, for example, for some of the sports activities, the parents may drop off and pick up, but they may not attend or witness, it's an evolving situation. We've been traditionally quite cautious, so if we were asked what to do with this situation, we would probably suggest delaying until the pattern is more clear. Now, we do have some time here until November the twenty-third, and we can revisit that, and we made it that really subject to having the available staff, because we know staff, some staff are quite keen to get back to work, and of course, there's some financial needs to do so, so we certainly recognize that as well. But the abundance of caution, I think if we were looking, we would probably temporarily delay things till we get a better sense of at least the growing numbers, and what the implications on that could be on the facilities in terms of their use. We may see fewer people, further distancing, greater costs associated with that, and those are all ongoing actions we're trying to monitor. I know there's been a lot of concern out there in terms of how we control those costs, but we think we can do so. It's just a bit early to foretell what that could look like, so I guess that'd be our position at the moment.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just wanted to comment, I mean, perhaps administrator doesn't have to say anything, but, I mean, if those things change, as the province or the Fraser Health or Vancouver Health or even the province make the decisions, we've got some challenges, as you know, in Fraser Health. So if they change, obviously, we will be notified as soon as possible to correct any decisions we make otherwise. I know that there's even another motion that was approved by yourself, but from Counsel Long, about even opening another, another one coming forward for a notice of motion about.
I didn't, sorry, I didn't approve, I didn't approve a motion, sorry.
Okay, the motion, we'll be discussing it sometime. But that's, that's basically my concern, that will be letting us know if other items come up from Fraser Health, Vancouver Health, or the province. Thank you.
Counsel Arnison?
Yes, thank you, worship. I also appreciated the report and the timeliness, and I do sincerely appreciate the cautious approach to the township of Langley to make sure as we go forward that these.
sure as we go forward that these measures can be taken to make sure that the staff and the residents are safe when they're in our facilities. However, I just want to make sure that we have when we're quoting about what numbers are rising, that in fact, I could be wrong. I haven't, you know, I'm not an expert on the subject, but I currently have not seen any closures of aquatic facilities in either in our province or in this area. And that if you look at comparators, not to say we're all exactly equal, but the city of Surrey, as of yesterday, is opening their public swimming and learn to swim on December first and aquatic fitness on December eighth, and that's in one of their facilities. So I'm just putting out there that, you know, there's different perspectives of how to look at the situation and that we've been very cautious so far and rightfully so. But I really feel that there is a certain element of trying to move forward to give the community what it is that they are requesting under very difficult circumstances. So I just want to put that out there.
Thank you. Counsel Ferguson's hands up and Counsel Arnesson, but I think it's spoken. So I'm gonna call the question for E seven. All those in favor? And opposed? Kerry's.
Opposed.
Oh, Counsel Davis opposed. Thank you. And move on to E eight, which was added to the agenda, and it's a motion for reconsideration. So Counsel Long added it. So Counsel Long, if you wish to move reconsideration, just to be clear, Counsel, or sorry, Ms. Bauer, there's no debate on reconsideration. It's just put on the floor, moved, seconded, and then a vote on the reconsideration. That's the first step. That's along.
You'll move, Your Worship.
Is there a second? Counsel Whitmarsh seconds. So the consideration is now on the floor. I will now call a question on reconsideration. All those in favor? Those opposed?
Opposed.
Counsel Ferguson, Counsel Richter, and Counsel Woodward, and Counsel Davis opposed. So the reconsideration is on the table. So now, Ms. Bauer, it has to be moved and seconded again. Yes, so I need a motion to move the that recommendation that's reconsideration, the that's been reconsidered. Can I have a motion, please?
I don't understand, but.
Well, you moved reconsideration. So now it comes back on the floor. It starts over as if it's brand new. So the motion is that as the next step in the reopening plan, council approved the reopening of W C Blair Recreation Centre swimming pool, including a target opening date of early November of twenty twenty and approved additional expenses of one seventy four and a pre-approved budget increase of eight seventy three for twenty twenty one. That's the motion that has to be moved. And then I believe you have an amendment.
Should I move it with the amendment? That's the whole point is to have the amendment, right?
It could because it's new. I believe it could be. Is that correct? Yes, it could. You could move it with the amendment.
I'll move.
Or with with your addition to it, because now it's it's like it's new on the floor. Okay?
So I'll move it with the amendment, Your Worship.
Okay. Is there a second? Counsel Arnesson seconds it. Discussion, Counsel Long.
Thanks, Your Worship. So I mean, I I I've put it on the table here for a number of reasons. The situation has somewhat changed a little bit in the last week. And really, the the main reason I put it here was because there was a funding. There's always been a funding issue involved with opening our our centers. Now, there are other considerations too, no doubt, and I don't want to minimize any of them. But I believe that the funding issue is somewhat been put aside now, considering these large amounts of money that are supposed to be coming to us for COVID relief. We haven't had a discussion from staff yet where how much money exactly is coming, what it's going to be used for. But in my affirmation, if it's for COVID relief, it is going to be put towards services that our citizens have been demanding and asking for. And most certainly, I don't know if the rest of council are getting as many emails as I have, but the opening of of Walnut Grove has been a subject of numerous emails, whereas I haven't seen that many about Blair. So all I'm doing is putting this on the table for council to consider that really we should be opening Walnut Grove Community Center as well. If we're going to open our facilities, it should be included. And now the the need to worry about financing is somewhat minimized or diminished to some extent because we're getting some funding that's going to help us with that. So that's the reason I put it on the floor, and I'm open to what council has to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Richter.
Yeah, well, I'm opposed to this whole game that's being played here. There was a motion on the published agenda that deals with this issue. That motion has now been effectively upstaged by Counsel. Don't accept it. I think it's just political game playing, and it should not be allowed.
Counsel Richter, you can speak to the motion. The motion is on the floor. No, you're not.
It's about political game playing, and I oppose the motion.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful.
I think.
Counsel Ferguson.
Worship, that's that is appropriate comment. I take objection. Thank you.
I understand. Counsel Ferguson. To the motion.
So Richter to finish. Okay, I don't know if you can see it. This is my active pass. I want all of you to put your passes out. I'm a user. I've consistently said that. I'm not sure. Going back to pre-COVID measures is the answer. I think that I would want to ask the staff, they may or may not know. I understand there was a meeting last week at the B C Park and Recreation Association concerned about steps going forward in all community. If is it, if I may through the chair, is staff able to report on that?
Mr. Back.
Thank you, Worship. There are ongoing updates. Perhaps Mr. Stare or Ms. Ms. Blair, if you're out there, you could comment.
Thank you, Mr. Back. And so, yeah, the we don't have anything conclusive from VCRPA yet as far as, you know, further steps. Lots of discussion happening.
Okay, from what? Okay, so that's fine. So what my next question would be, I know that they're going to be looking at a number of procedures and protocols. I've had the pleasure of attending a number of their conferences over the years, and they're a large organization, looks at recreation, recreation, and as I said before, I'm a recreation user. They are also concerned about how to move forward under COVID, and COVID is a major concern. I I, just like we talked about earlier on about meeting as a council, I think that we've made a decision to go with Blair, and that might even be delayed depending on what happens with after November, it's what between now and November twenty third. So opening up the two pools, or there will be now be three pools, I find under what's happened on Saturday, not Wednesday, on Saturday, regardless of the money coming forward, is is not the right step right now. I think we have to use caution. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Kunst.
Yeah, for me, I'm obviously the 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 second wave here is is really concerning to me. But if we are opening, we have two pools now that we've said we're going to open. So opening Walnut Grove makes sense. But would the mover be, would I be able to suggest an amendment to say January first? So which gives us a little more time to see what Bonnie Henry and.
I'll second that.
Province is going to do in the next few weeks and also give our staff a little more time should we actually decide to open Walnut Grove. So that would be my suggestion.
Okay.
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, just hold on before I accept that. Mr. Back, so January first is a statutory holiday. Would it be early in January would be more appropriate? If you could change your motion, Counsel Kunst, to early January rather than a specific date and give staff.
A date early January in the first week, that would make sense for for staff.
Okay. So I'm gonna go through the speakers list.
That's fine with me, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Okay, I'm gonna go through the speakers list, and before I do the amendment, and then we'll we'll consider the amendment. Counsel Woodward.
Thanks. I actually just have a clarification question before I speak, maybe through the staff can clarify. So if this motion is voted down, then now we're reversing previous direction to close W C Blair, because now moved with the amendment, if I have this correct, include the opening of both W C Blair Recreation Centre and Walnut Grove Community Centre pool areas. So this is voted down now. Would that be interpreted as direction to not proceed with the opening of W C Blair from directed from a few weeks ago?
Mr. Back.
Thank you, Worship. Yes, because the nature of the motion previously was to open Blair, we would then likely have to return to that. So if this motion were defeated, we'd have no direction as to Blair. So we would then, I guess, interpret that to mean that we would be be looking for a further motion as to Blair itself.
Okay, so just to clarify. So once again, my previous attempt at division two weeks ago was to separate the decision making around each major pool facility, and now it's been combined up again. So I would like to move division once again to consider W C Blair separately from Walnut Grove Community Centre. I don't understand why this goes back as a combined motion.
That's appropriate. You move division. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Counsel Richter seconds. Just show of hands. All those in favor of division? Opposed? Counsel along opposed division approved is approved. Okay, so.
So can we just vote on W C Blair and not reverse that direction?
We'll we'll go through the speakers list, and I'll do the voting. So.
I would I don't. I would like to speak twice potentially to each.
Well, no, you can speak now and and we'll love to listen to what you say.
Mr. Mayor, for division, we're we're given two opportunities per.
Okay, so you have one opportunity now. You have you have the floor. So go ahead and speak.
So if we're speaking to W C Blair, I obviously still support the same decision to reopen W C Blair. I don't understand why this is being revisited in the form that it is. And I, Ms. Counsel Long can object to my comments as well. This is political game playing, and we need to move on with decision making that's appropriate, not continually relinking these two facilities together. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Marsh.
So we're.
And you speak on either one if you wish. And, you know, obviously, some counselors want to speak more. So you go go ahead.
Sorry, are we just speaking about?
You can speak to either one. I've ruled that that's okay. But obviously, there's a counselor wants to speak.
Right. So we've already made a decision as a council on W C Blair. I do think that we could consider an amendment on W C Blair with regards to the opening date in light of the the new information receiving about COVID and from our province. I don't think anyone on council is asking us to do something that's unsafe. I think we'll always be under the health authorities and guidance by our ECO here on here in in Township of Langley and our sort of E O C in Township of Langley will always be. No one's asking on council to do anything different than that. But I do think it's important that we as a as a community and as a staff for the township of Langley, we know what we are planning to do. And that is when things are safe, when things make sense, when we have the authority to go and do it, that we open up both facilities, whether that's the beginning of January or in November, is 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 up to not necessarily up to me. It's up to council to give direction, but also for us to follow the health authorities. So I'm I'm supportive of us moving, particularly in light of the financial information we see, of moving forward with both facilities. And so I would, but I'm happy in amending them both to have dates of beginning of January is fine with me. But I think we should open both.
Thank you. Counsel Richter, or sorry, Counsel Arnesson.
Yes, thank you. I'll be brief. I appreciate the opportunity to clarify the situation. It was never my intention to try and subvert getting one pool as opposed to another by just putting off W C Blair. So I just wanted to be on the public record to say I'm in favor with the amendments as to dates and safety considerations and protocols that we just go forward based on having both of those pools set and with a plan of action in mind.
Thank you. Counsel Richter.
Yes, I think we need to look at one pool at a time. I think opening both pools is taking on a bit too much in terms of all the safety protocols that are needed. And we don't even know what the usage is going to be. So I like the idea of proceeding with Blair because we passed that the last time. And I like Counselor Kunst's suggestion with regards to deferring Walnut Grove until January, so we can see what continues to happen on the COVID front as well as the usage front. Because we've got one pool now, Alda Grove, that's operating at eighty to ninety percent capacity. Once we open Blair, Alda Grove's usage is probably going to drop. Once we open Walnut Grove, what will happen then? Are we going to end up with three pools open, all with only a thirty percent occupancy? Well, that's not a very good use of financial resources. I'm sorry. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Ferguson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, it's interesting. We had this debate last meeting. We're continuing. I would ask every member of council tomorrow to review the video from that we had the exact same. And I even showed my, I'll even forgive myself and showed my activity pass last time. You know, we're not in pre-COVID numbers. We talked about the staff report. Now, if I may, I do have a question for staff. How soon, going to last meeting, how soon was Walnut Grove going to be considered opening after Blair, as we discussed last meeting, if I may through the chair?
If I could, for Mr. Back, just step in. So, yeah, we're we're talking in the range of three to four weeks, probably, unless we get approval, to make adjustments to schedules and then further recall staff.
So that's the point I'm making. Three to four weeks, we're discussed. We're not talking about a year or six months. That was discussed last meeting, and now we were going around in circles again. Can we not just proceed, given the directions of Dr. Bonnie Henry with the November twenty third for Blair, and then a few weeks later, as Counsel Kunst mentioned in January, the first week of January, consider opening Walnut Grove? That, to me, just makes more sense. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counsel Woodward.
Yeah, on W C Blair, because I feel like maybe there'll be some amendments coming on Walnut Grove. I don't I don't really support the timeline, but we can get to that in a moment. I'm I'm actually thinking there's more urgency now to potentially have us consider opening up our swim facilities as potentially one of the only exercise option that remains. So I'm I'm looking at a statement from today, from a summary of Dr. Henry's latest announcements. And it says here, park board sports programs that will be suspended include hockey, volleyball, basketball, water polo, ringette, indoor soccer, badminton, pickleball, table tennis games. So basically, group sports. Indoor physical activities, which include physical distancing, can be maintained, will continue, such as one on one personal training, fitness centers, and public swimming and skating. So I don't understand this rationale to delay months when Dr. Henry is saying public swimming, that is not that is not a group based activity such as water polo is something that's encouraged. What are people supposed to do in the middle of winter? And how are they supposed to get exercise? We've been hearing for a long time that a lot of people are dependents and use these facilities a lot for their physical fitness and health. Let's make sure they know that nobody gets COVID, though, while a bunch of people have their health deteriorating. And so we have to find the right balance between options for people, right balance between opening these facilities, but not necessarily the recreation centers, such as the Willoughby Community Center and other fitness specific facilities that we have, and ensure that public swimming is an option for people that that need it. And I don't see why we're delaying until January or February, when Dr. Henry is specifically excluding that as as an option for people to have and consider. So we're the ones that that own and operate these facilities. We've been given funding by the provincial government to continue to make that an option. And now we're delaying for two more months. So I I don't support that. I don't understand that. I don't understand how we can open W C Blair, but now we're delaying Walnut Grove, which is a different facility with all the extra population around it. And along, of course, we're going to make sure that it's safe and operated within directions from the provincial government and the staff that have been working on this. So again, that's why I filed the notice of motion that had a funding numbers inside of it. Maybe I'll amend it to include some of the components of my notice of motion. But I think we I support generally sticking with what we decided, which is W C Blair and opening up Walnut Grove in a reasonable timeframe, as soon as practical is determined by staff, but not an artificial delay for two months for people that need that facility. Thanks.
Thank you. Counsel. Counsel Kunst.
Yeah, my originally, my intention was not to delay the opening of W C Blair. It was to give us a little more time with Walnut Grove. So I don't know how to to.
Yeah, so right now, we're we're just on W C Blair. That's the first one. And so unless there's an.
So I'm in favor of sticking whatever council decided last week when I wasn't here on opening that. So and then I guess we're moving into the Walnut Grove boat, right?
After this. Yeah.
Okay.
Counsel Whitmarsh.
Yeah, I I I fully support staying with the the decision we made last time on W C Blair, the November twenty third date or close to it, based on health authorities. We should be striving for that. I don't see any reason to change it.
Thank you. Counsel Long.
I took my hand down because I need to speak.
Okay.
We'll agree with remove open there.
Okay, so on on Blair, I'll call a question. All those in favor? Opposed? Kerry's. Thank you. Now we go on to the Walnut Grove.
Jack, I was I'm sorry, Mayor Froze, I was opposed.
Okay, sorry. Okay, uh, sorry, uh, Counsel Davis opposed, you understand. Uh, okay, so we're now on to the, um, uh, the Walnut Grove Community Center, Counsel Long.
Right, so I'm not sure where you are with, did you accept that motion up, but I just wanted to remind.
So the motion's on the floor, uh, so, uh, there's, the motion is, as it's written here, there is no amendments on it at this point.
So maybe I could just, uh.
Oh, well, point of order, Mr. Mayor, isn't there an amendment on Walnut Grove, the Counselor?
No, there isn't, I, uh. She did, and I suggested, she did, and I suggested that I would go through the speakers list, and then we'd go back to, and, and. And since then, there was a division, so I have, the motion has not been accepted by the chair, it may be made. But I wanted to go through the speakers list, so everyone could have their say, and then Counsel Kuntz, I had a note here, I'd go back to her, she could make that amendment, so it's not on the floor, but, uh.
So the proposed amendment, Worship, does include the words, and I hope you have the correct version. That, uh, that we open also, essentially, we've already agreed again that we're gonna open Blair. Uh, I always maintain we should have opened Walnut Grove first, but that's a moot point now. Um, but the amendment that we're discussing here talks that we're going to also open Walnut Grove Community Center pool areas. And the wording is with the opening dates to be as soon as possible, safe and practical, so I understand. Other councils might want to put in, uh, January the first, I prefer to leave the wording the way it is. And, uh, whether that's January the first, or, and I don't know if, if Mr. Stair really was addressing the question that was asked about the three to four weeks. Uh, because with three to four weeks, I don't know if we'd be even having this discussion, I think he was talking about, once he was given the. Uh, the, if council directed to open a pool, it would take three or four weeks to open it, but my. Motion, proposed motion amendment here says, and the words are as soon as possible, as soon as safe and practical. And so I think that kind of covers everything.
Thank you. Thank you, Counsel Whitmarsh.
Yeah, I'll be, I'll be supporting this, uh, motion, uh, I'd like it as early as we can. Uh, recognizing it might be beginning of January, but I think this motion allows the flexibility for staff to, uh, work with health authorities to open.
Counsel Kuntz.
Oh, no, I was just gonna, um, oh, my, oh, I'm on. Um, yeah, so whatever, um, do I now make that?
Yes, yeah.
That amendment, okay, so. Sure, I would just amend it to, um, for a, an opening date, uh, first week in January, unless we hear. You know, something different from our health authority, um, it just gives, you know, staff a little more time if we're gonna say, oh, open it. In, in the twenty-third of November, um, it just doesn't seem like that's a, a reasonable timeframe, but, um, so yeah, that would be my.
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, the earliest, uh, would be early January, based on. Situation at the time, okay, second by Counsel Ferguson, so on the amendment. I'll go to Counsel, this on the amendment, Counsel Davis and then Counsel Long on the amendment.
Okay, on, on the amendment. You know what, I like the idea of leaving it the way Counselor Long had it, safe. As soon as practical, but as long as it's safe, as long, and, once we put on the first of January. I'm not gonna vote for it, um, and I'm, I'm not trying to be tough, it's just, leave it as safe. When, when, uh, the provincial government says it's okay, then I have no problems. But if we, if you put a date on it, that makes me wanna vote against it and, and, and for the wrong reasons. Maybe January, like, we, we're gonna stick with that date, and even if it's not safe, we don't wanna stick with it, I wanna.
There, I'll, I'll clarify the, the amendment is, is at the earliest, it would be early January as the situation allows.
As situation allows.
Yeah, so it's, has to be safe, yeah.
Yeah, well, okay, but you still got a date in there.
No, it's earliest is January, it doesn't say January first in the motion.
Okay, okay, you know what, then I may, I'll, I will support that then, okay.
Counsel Long.
Yeah, I'm kind of confused, because as, as much as I appreciate the concerns here, uh, I have to agree that maybe putting a date in isn't, isn't the wisest, because. By leaving the wording as it is, uh, it, it, it does include the three things that we talked about, it has to be practical, it has to be safe. And, uh, you know, as soon as possible, many of the councils, uh, are saying here that, that they'd like to see it open sooner than later. Especially since Bonnie Henry has actually said that swimming's a good thing to do, and we have very few other options considering. All the other ones have been shut down and locked down, so, uh, in, in respect to everybody else, I think the wording that it's currently exists is better, it gives some flexibility. And hopefully we won't be revisiting this any longer, uh, by having to come back if, I mean, the first is, is or is not accomplishable, or if staff. You see, when staff put the call out for, for staff, if staff are ready to come to work, and they say, well, now you can't come to work until January, I don't know. How that works, I don't know if, if swimming during the Christmas season is a good thing, it may well be, because there'll be a break there for kids. So I, I just prefer to leave the wording the way it is, and I think that that kind of covers everything, uh, and, and doesn't put the actual date in of January the. Sooner the better, in my respect.
Uh, yes, thank you, Worship, for allowing me to weigh in, um, I, I like the combination of language, because I do have a concern. That if there's not a date certain that we're including in there, there would always be the tension and opportunity that should. Yet another, uh, health, uh, forum, or, you know, something else come up in the meantime. That we then put the date off again, so I think it gives certainty, but flexibility at the same time, if we use both of those, uh, together, so. I think a provisional date is helpful going forward, that's my comment.
Counsel Richter.
Um, yes, I agree with the rewording of the motion, and I just want to make sure that that's what we're voting on, that, um. We defer Walnut Grove to the earliest as January or as the situation allows, is that the correct wording?
Ms. Bauer, if you could perhaps read the, uh, amendment.
Um, the amendment currently reads that the opening would be the earliest of the first week of January, as per the instructions of the health authorities.
Uh, I don't think, that's what Counselor Kuntz put on.
Yeah, I think it was, yeah, you're close, it was, um, I believe it's worded, uh, that would be in early January at the earliest.
Yeah, I, the wording I wrote down, Mr. Mayor, was, um, defer the Walnut Grove opening. To the earliest as, to the earliest as January or as the situation allows.
Yeah, it's early January, yeah, that's very close, yeah.
And if that's the wording, I support it.
Thank you, Counsel Long.
Boy, it, it seems we're, muddling, can I get a, a sense from staff, if, if this amendment didn't pass, if, if we did it the way it was originally worded? Wh- was I correct to hear that the staff said it would be in three or four weeks? Because I would hate to see us preclude the Christmas season, uh, you know, as, as an example. And, and I don't know why we would be delaying it if staff are ready to open it sooner, so, um. Can we have a repeat from there, because he said three to four weeks, and I don't understand.
Yeah, Mr. Backen will clarify.
Day or from the twenty-third of November or what?
Mr. Backen.
Uh, thank you, Worship, it, it does bear some clarification, the, the, the best case start time, as we're seeing, is about three to four weeks. Uh, best case, uh, so that was the, for example, the time used in the Blair discussion. Uh, for this facility, it's gonna be more problematic to try to open, uh, say in three to four weeks because of the staffing and, uh. And timelines, we'll certainly do as quickly as we can, but barring any further public health orders. What we're saying is it's more likely going to be four to six weeks, which is then gonna put us the other side of the season, that's what I think we're trying to emphasize. Uh, right now, it's, uh, approximately November the tenth, uh, with the things as they are, trying to open around December, uh. Tenth to fifteenth is gonna be problematic, um, we're thinking that it's probably wisest to try to open up a January, uh, first week in January. As quickly as we can, because of some of the staffing issues and the uncertainty we're facing. With the present environment is effectively, in many ways, we're shut down for the next two weeks because of some of the concerns that are being expressed, and if that's lengthened, that could also impact matters.
You are muted, you worship.
Muted, I see Counsel Woodward's hand right up, I was gonna call the question, Counsel Woodward on the amendment.
Yeah, I just want to get that, uh, some of those comments from Mr. Backen clarified, that, uh, so maybe I, maybe I'm reading it incorrectly, of course, the media. Is infamous for getting things wrong, um, is, is it, is it confusing that potentially the two-week, uh, situation that we're in now? In the Fraser Health area is somehow complicating reopening of facilities that Dr. Henry says we should be opening or have open? Or, or should remain open, uh, can I get some clarity on, on that?
Mr. Backen.
And thank you, your worship, um, uh, as we're experiencing, there's a lot of concern in the public, but also among staff during this period of time. Um, our goal is to maintain the existing openings that we have, uh, but as I, I referenced, uh, there is some work to do, I think, uh, both. In the civic facility, but also our other facilities, uh, to ensure that we can get, uh, staff that are ready, willing, and available to work with the public. There's a no, new layer of complication with some of the additional concerns being raised, such as the wearing of masks, the social distancing. Then ensuring that there's not any group activities and group dynamics, it's very much an evolving, uh, situation, as we're seeing with the, uh. Uh, with the, uh, various Parks and Rec associations, in many cases, uh, sometimes pulling back and sometimes trying to accelerate.
Okay, just a follow-up question on that too, so just to clarify again, from my own information and, uh, and others. That, uh, we're still in, in the state of emergency, we still, we still technically have the E O C structure. And that even if this motion is passed and the E O C determines that it can't proceed, it simply would not happen anyway, would that be correct?
Technically, technically correct, your worship, that can be correct on that, um, however, a strong preference is given to the policymakers, so where. Uh, where it is in any way possible to achieve the results, that's what we strive to do. It would, uh, likely take a combination of a change of circumstances and additional public health orders. Before we would determine that it wasn't appropriate to proceed with the council direction.
Alright, thank you.
It's, so I was muted, I'm speaking, and you can't see I'm speaking, because I got a mask on, it's, it's a beautiful thing. Uh, but Ms. Bowers can be me in check, she makes sure I unmute, so thank you. So now I'm gonna call the question on the amendment, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, opposed?
Opposed.
Counsel Woodward opposed, Counsel Long opposed, and Counsel Ferguson opposed, did I see your hand go up? Counsel Ferguson, no, Counsel Ferguson's favor. Okay, that, the amendment carries, so back to the main motions as, uh, amended, and it's on the Walnut Grove, Counsel Woodward, you're the next on the speakers list. Do you still wish to speak?
No, uh, the motion is amended, uh, I think I would like to raise one question though, so in the original, uh, notice of motion, just to clarify, the original notice of motion. That now is kind of irrelevant, thanks to the reconsideration. Maneuverings, um, I would like to clarify the, the numbers though, that I, I was given, uh, I did ask for some updated numbers for Mr. Backen. When completing that notice of motion, so the most updated numbers to form my notice of motion are different now than the budget approvals for. In this reconsideration, so if I could get some clarity on, on what kind of numbers are necessary. And now, of course, it doesn't seem like the, the twenty-twenty necessarily, the twenty-twenty number is gonna be necessary. So if I could get some clarity on what those numbers should be, uh, and whether these current numbers, which just seem a little obsolete, are still sufficient.
Certainly, Mr. Backen.
Uh, thank you, your worship, the, the numbers, as was referenced in the notices of motion, are, I think, still accurate, uh. A very brief financial explanation, the, the grant money we're anticipating receiving about seven point six million dollars. We hope comes in in twenty-twenty, and a good chance it will, uh, that will be treated, I think, as falling into surplus, uh, and then would be used for next year. The, uh, the gap that we're experiencing next year, pardon me, we're likely experiencing the same gap next year as we're anticipating this year. So those funds will be used to, uh, bridge that gap, and there's gonna be the need for some subsequent discussion as part of the, uh. Budget processes to make sure that we are looking at, uh, ways to, uh, to, to. Be maximize our efficiency, minimize our expenses, and maximize the revenue in, in an environment of a declining revenue.
Okay, so no, I, I, I understood the need for the numbers, but the, the numbers in the reconsideration and version are different than the notice of motion I filed. And the numbers in the notice of motion, uh, were provided by Mr. Backen in terms of, uh, what would be the latest and greatest version of the numbers, so. I'm looking at the reconsideration version, um, which is having one seventy-four for twenty-twenty. And a budget preapproval of eight seventy-three for twenty-twenty-one, but I was provided with, uh. One eighty-six and one point one, so I'm just curious if we should be amending these numbers to, to get staff what they need based upon new direction for January.
Thank, thank you, perhaps, uh, maybe some clarification, the numbers that were, that are given in both instances are, are best estimates. And at the time of, uh, the budget, uh, staff would be more able to provide us with more accurate numbers, so either way. Uh, they may change, whether it's the numbers that you got today, or yesterday, whenever it was, or the numbers that came in the last meeting. So they are estimates, and, and we'd have to ha- fine tune that as we go, Mr. Backen, perhaps you can, uh, help, help with that.
Yes, that's correct, your worship, the first scenario that was referenced was, uh, a few weeks ago. Uh, with Mr. Stare's assistance, they were updated, and that was provided to Counselor Woodward. Uh, as we're now seeing, the, the situation's changed a little bit as well, because we've been able to refine the opening, uh, to be at the earliest, or January the first, so that would minimize our. Uh, some of our costs in, in twenty-twenty, uh, but would still require the updated cost for twenty-twenty-one. Um, I think we would anticipate that by, by inference, while there is a difference, uh, we can probably make it work. Because they'll be further revised during the budget sessions that are, uh, gonna be coming up fairly soon.
Okay, so I, I'll accept that, I won't waste time with amending the numbers, um, just with the understanding from council that, uh, there was a one point one number on the table. Uh, based upon some sort of considerations, so what we're seeing in this motion, and of course, I just want everyone to be aware that. We might be looking at, uh, slightly more based upon the latest information I was provided with earlier, uh, last week, so just, uh, but I'll just leave it there, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, that's good, it's good heads up, uh, certainly these numbers are estimates, best, best estimates at the moment, and subject to change, and then once we. Have that budget, um, discussion, and there's this, uh, set amount put in there, then that would be the, the amount, but. Sometimes, you know, staff will, you know, if it goes over, that would have to come back to us, if it goes under it, then it certainly would be going back to, to our surplus. Okay, I'll call the question on the motion as amended, on the second part, uh, all those in favor? Opposed?
Opposed.
Counsel Richter and Counsel Davis opposed, the motion carries. I'm gonna call a five-minute, uh, recess, just to stretch our legs.
Thank you.
And it's, we've got through all the reports, and we're gonna head to bylaws, so I think it's a appropriate time, so if we come back at, uh, four, four fifteen, thank you.
And the plaza being right beside the neighboring property. So that's the amendment I'm going to propose and I'll stop now so other people can have an opportunity to discuss it. But I just wanted to make notice and I'm, I'm actually okay with moving it right now, but it's up to you, Mr. Mayor.
Just go through the list. Let me speak once and then once
Okay.
First time, then I'll go back to you before the second time.
Thank you.
Uh, Council Whitmarsh.
Uh, yes, thank you. Um, the, the comment that was just made by Council Richter, I think, is, is a good one. It is a thought that I was sort of wondering myself. When I looked at underneath building A, south of building A, it looks like there is a similar size of space, it's about the size of the courtyard that's north of building B. So I'm, I'm not sure, I'm certainly not a designer. But I'm not sure that building Airbnb would have to change. It seems that the courtyard could move to the south of building A and it would make maybe some advantage there, but that, I, so I, I, I agree with Council Richter, there could maybe be some slight adjustment made there. Yeah, just, I wanted just to confirm again with, with staff, and I know we talked about this before, but maybe through your worship to staff. If, if we, on this piece of property, if, if the owner of the property wanted to build a residence, a single family residence that was of, I think, quite a large, I think, quite a large house could go there, would not need to come to council. They could just go ahead and build a fairly large, I think it was in the neighborhood of five thousand square foot home could fit on there without having to come to council. Is that, is that correct? Maybe through your, through staff?
Sure, Mr. Seifi.
Uh, thank you, your worship. In anticipation of the, the question being raised, staff has prepared this, this table, your worship, I hope is of use to council. It provides the provisions under various, I guess, scenarios, if you will, including existing zoning. That's the first column there under the development site. So at the top end, your worship, we have I guess, two major columns, two primary columns. One being the development site, and then the other one being the adjacent site to the east, that being the Princess and the P bed and breakfast. So under the development site, we have scenarios that include the existing zoning. The proposed zoning, what the existing Murrayville Committee Plan provides for. And then in fact, what the proposal is, which is actually slightly lower than what the proposed zone would actually allow for, or the underlying zoning would allow for. So if you look at the lot coverage, for example, the existing zoning, which is S R one, provides for thirty three percent lot coverage. Whereas the proposed development is proposing a twenty two percent site coverage for both buildings A and B. The building height, the existing zoning provides for nine meter or twenty nine point five feet of maximum height for a building. And the proposal for building A is seven meters or twenty three feet. And for building B is six point six meters or twenty one point seven feet. In terms of setback, the existing zoning again is three meters for the side yard. And because we have two buildings, building A, which is the Westley Building, has a point five, point five four meter setback from the property line that is two sixteen street. And then building B, which is closest to the, the property to the east, has a a side setback of three point one meters, which is just slightly more than the existing zoning would allow. And as far as the front yard setback is concerned, the existing zone, S R one, provides for nine point seven five meters. Whereas the proposal is slightly more for building A, which is ten meters, just about thirty three feet. And for building B is about sixty feet or eighteen meters, your worship.
Great, that's good for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, Council Kunst.
That was one of my questions as well. I think for me, the concern is if, if this doesn't pass, or if we don't approve this, that there could potentially be a bigger, a bigger piece of, or a bigger building on that lot and that there's not really a lot that we'll be able to do about it. Would that be correct? Through your worship to staff?
Mr. Seifi.
Mr. Seifi.
That's correct, your worship. I wouldn't say there wouldn't be anything we can do about it. I would phrase it in such a way that the zoning, the current zoning entitles the property owner to a certain building. Which would then really be a matter of compliance with the building code requirements and our building bylaw requirements in terms of fire protection and, and health and safety matters. And that kind of a scenario, a building could be as large as thirty three percent floor area and as large as, or as high as nine meters in height.
Right.
Point of order, your worship, or information, or whatever Council Woodward wants to call it, it's still a heritage alteration area. So he would have to still come to council, would it not?
That's correct, your worship. It would, as, as a building within the heritage conservation area. Just highlighting the, the zoning bylaw provisions. As you know, the heritage conservation area is, requirements are akin to a development permit, which are, are fairly, I guess, constrained in their application in that they need to relate to form and, and character and, and sighting.
And from what I understand, this development did come through the heritage review panel, the, I believe that the Heritage Advisory Committee and as well as approved by the Murrayville Hall Association. So there's, it seems like there's a lot of support in the surrounding community. So just to confirm that.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Council Ferguson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know it, the question was asked, the very, very first question was asked by another member of council voted a person just proceeding. It's not as if you're building a house on a area in Willoughby that's been pre-zoned and you're basically going to build a house and look for a building permit. From what I understand, the applicant would have to apply for not only a building permit, but the heritage alteration permit. And if I may, through the chair to, to Mr. Seifi or whomever else, is there are an upper steps which are different than just applying for, to build a house, if I may.
Mr. Seifi.
Uh, yes, your worship. I, I think that's what I intended to say in response to the question raised by Council Long just a few minutes ago. In that, yes, it is part of the heritage conservation area. As such, it does require council approval. But such review by council should be ideally limited to form, citing and character, which is the matters that are related to a heritage alteration permit area process, which is similar to a development permit process and, and not restrictive in terms of, I guess, or more flexibly or more broadly interpreted to, to relate to floor area coverage or, or height.
No, if I may through the chair, I believe the neighbor has, has been explained that too. It was, the information was provided to him about what indeed could be put there. I imagine the neighbor, I can't speak for them. Simply says, well, a good neighbor policy would be, the sighting would be so, so much further than the bylaws. Say the bylaws says, you know, three meters. The sighting might be they would have to go five or ten meters, even though they would build a large house. And lots of larger houses are in the area. That would be up to the person building or not, to being a good neighbor. We can't address that right now. I'm, I'm being consistent with this particular bylaw. I had concerns on it right from the very beginning, first and second. I think it's too dense. I don't think it, it is going to be a good read for the neighbors and neighborhood. I also, there might be some ideas about changing things around. I don't know if that would work. I just don't believe it would. I've got a lot of respect for the architect and what the architect had built in the past around this community and other communities, a reputable outfit. So certainly I, I'm not looking for blame or fault there. I certainly, on any given day, Mr. Mayor, some counselors oppose applications and, and they either go through or don't go through that. So anyway, that's my position. I certainly will not be supporting this particular bylaw. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Anderson.
Yes, thank you, your worship. And I do appreciate the feedback. And also as council will recall, I was the chair for the public hearing for this. And so my recollection, it was about two hours of listening to the pros and cons of this application. I, I, I just want to refer back to the suggestion that perhaps something else could be built on the site that would be comparable in terms of square footage or footprint. But I recognize that there is a vast difference between a large house and a commercial entity with a somewhat substantial parking lot. And so part of, I just want to reiterate some of the things that resonated with me when I was listening to what the comments were, as well as seeing the written comments. So number one was the heritage context. And I always really strongly feel that if there's a heritage area, that we should be as sensitive and sympathetic as possible to the existing uses. And I know that there was a discussion and that I believe the proponent did a good job of talking about the history of the area and having commercial in the past. But that was the past. And I think that we need to really focus on the present. So whether or not a large house would be equally imposing or objectionable, I don't know. But I know a commercial use is quite different than that. The other thing that hasn't come up yet is the actual driveway that forms an access point to the back of the Princess and the P, which apparently is now being incorporated into the roadway and parking area. And I, I, I can totally understand why the adjoining neighbor to the east would object to that, having had an unhindered access for, forever. The other one really is, and Council Richter, I think, did a good job of articulating what could change about this plan. I think, though, I agree with Council Ferguson in the sense that if a site has already been mapped out, that there's you know, reasons why things are in the placement that they are. So I'm not sure that flipping would actually work. However, the one thing that really challenges me is this idea that if you have a commercial entity and have commercial garbage pickup and that's close to your property line, that is very intrusive for people. And I would object, you know, to that, just on the grounds of the noise. So I don't think necessarily that adding a commercial component here is helpful to the area. And I would probably be supportive of changes to anything that would make the site plan better. But I'm not going to support it in the long run because I just don't think it's, it's the right proposal for this location.
Council Long.
Thanks, your worship. I should make a comment or two about the potential of rejigging the site. This was extensively reviewed by the Heritage Advisory Committee. And the citing is very, very specific to how it is, the location of the plaza. So be very careful, council, if you consider moving it because the number one criteria that we heard from not only the neighbor to the east, but everybody in that region was that the view of the travelers in, the view corridor needs to be protected. So the flip is not going to work. That's going to put a building right in front of the travelers in, not what was required, was asked for at all. The plaza, I guess, well, we can have some discussion of whether a plaza should or should not be there, but you certainly cannot block that view corridor. Now, our review panel did look at the, the construction of the building. They don't necessarily comment on what the proper uses for the, the, the land is supposed to be. But I imagine that perhaps Council Ferguson was on council when the amendment was made, I think in nineteen eighty nine or some period of time, where commercial was designated for that region. And so there's part of the discussion that we hear from those that are concerned about it is there shouldn't be commercial there. We've discussed the possibilities. If there wasn't commercial and the giant house put there instead, would that be any better? But I mean, a decision was made many years ago to put a limited amount of commercial there, and that's what this proposal shows. But my main comment, your worship, is that we cannot be rejigging it on the fly here. Because then if you adjust any of the view corridors, that's going to create further problems.
Thank you for that. Council Davis.
Thank you very much. I just want to, if we look back in the his, this is a this is a, what's the heritage alteration area? And if you look back at some of the things that were there, the general store, you lived upstairs, you ran the store. The doctor's office down the street, you lived upstairs, the doctor, and he ran a business down beneath. The house across the street, I just, the whole, and even, even in the porter building, you lived up. That's what happened in, in a community, even in nineteen oh six, in a move into history. So to add a commercial component, like everything's there, it's commercial. There's the, there's the sandwich place. There's the bed and breakfast is a, is a, is a Princess and the P, that's a, a business. And they live there also, or I, I don't know, they have living everything around there that has a business in it, generally somebody, I don't know if they live in the, in the doctor's office, but that's what, that's what it used to be like. So to have a corner there, to have a corner there, I, to have commercial in it, I, I think you've got to have, you know, I don't know if you can outrule, outrule the commercial part of it. You know, I just, I, I, I kind of got a little bit lost when Raymond was talking about the, whether or not you could mirror, if, if Council Richter wants to mirror it, because if, if you didn't mirror it, it would open up the, you know, the, like, they have the courtyard there that resembles the five corners. And if you put it, it'll be closer to, you'll have better light, I think. Because now it's not behind. It would be easier. It would be more open because it's on the roadside, it's not in between two buildings. And that would give you, and I don't know, the fellow says he's going to live there. But anyhow, my guess, where I'm going with this is, my question is, is it possible? Didn't Ramon, Mr. Ramon Steffi say it was possible? Or did he, I got kind of lost in the numbers?
I can ask Mr. Seifi.
Okay.
Just on, on the practicality of flipping it. And certainly, it's good to hear that Heritage Committee looked at that and the view corridors are important, all those things. Mr. Seifi, can you comment on, on that? I know the motion's not on there. I think I'm going to Council Richter next, but this might help inform everyone.
Thank you, your worship. I don't believe I commented on the, the suggestion. I think it's important to note that any change that's made will likely have significant potentially unintended consequences and implications. So staff is typically very cognizant of, of, of changes. And certainly, I'm not suggesting it's not possible. It is possible. But it will have consequences that I cannot anticipate at this point, nor, nor comment upon. Just to suggest that, for example, this plaza is, I guess, easily relocatable to the other side. It would have to be discussed by the architect, with the architect. And as Council Long referenced, likely will have to be referred again to the stakeholders for comments before council would want to, would want to approve or, or not, and make these some changes. So I don't know if it's, if it's easily, easily done or not. But as far as the, the commercial nature is concerned, I had a photograph that, that shows the historic context that it was a commercial enterprise. As well as the fact that, again, as Council Long referenced, it was something that council put its mind to back in nineteen eighty nine as part of a specific resolution that provides a basis for the current, current proposal, which is a limited commercial use on the property.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. So Council Richter, going back to you regarding your amendment.
I would like to make an amendment that we flip it, like mirror image it. Put building A where building B is, put building B in the courtyard where building A is.
Point of order.
Yes.
Would that be an amendment or a referral back to staff based on staff's previous comments?
Well, she can make a, sorry, Council Richter can make an amendment. And then that, it could all be, then that could be referred back if council so desired.
Yeah, and it may, it may be appropriate to refer it back, but I'm just saying that the amendment I'm proposing, I think, deals with the number one point of contention that one of the neighbors had relative to point of contention that one of the neighbors had relative to where the plaza was located.
So so with your amendment, if we get it seconded at that point, it could be referred, or we could debate it if it failed. If it passed, then it could be referred back. I think that might be the more appropriate because then there's the amendment that can be referred back to come back, but or referred back before that, so it's up to council. So is there a second or to the amendment? Councillor Arneson seconds the amendment, so speakers on the amendment. Councillor Ferguson, you had us up from before, you wish to speak to the amendment?
Oh, no, I don't.
Okay, councillor Richter, you speak to the amendment?
Yes, I I think that this is not going to detract from the corner there. I think it will add to the corner there. It will create a more walkable area. It will have things that will draw people to walk to, particularly that little plaza. I think it will enhance the actual five corners, having a plaza there right beside the five corners. I think it solves a lot of problems and it allows the community to to move forward in a progressive way. So I'm, I I think we should at least try this, and I certainly don't object to referring it back to staff to discuss with the proponent. You know, before we pass this.
Councillor Long?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Your Worship, it's it's a nonstarter because the number, and I and I heard the comment that it was the number one concern was the plaza. No, the concern from the neighbor is a is a list of very long, and he's opposed to everything there, which is his right to be. But the number, it is not the number one thing, it may be something that we've all heard maybe. But this, the number one thing is to preserve the view of the travelers in. And that's why the plaza is purposely put there and the layout is purposely placed here. So I'm sorry, I I must object and not support that. Council will do what it wishes, but believe me, it is a nonstarter. I suppose if you want to send the whole thing back for a reenery, that's basically what you're going to do with this motion. So I think we really should be looking at the merits of what we have in front of us and supporting it. But mucking around with it is not, is going to make it far worse, so we can't support that.
Councillor Whitmarsh?
Yeah, my my recollection when we walked through this the first time was that the original proposal before this one came was that building B would be further placed further north. And it did block the view of the travelers lodge, of the travelers B and B. And it blocked that view, which made, which was one of the the big issues that there was. So so the second rendition that came back, which is what we have in front of us now, was to pull building B back further south. And it was actually, it was kind of two separate, made into two separate buildings, so they could pull building B back rather than one larger structure and allowing the view. So I I do agree with councillor Long that I think that is problematic. My my concern isn't so much about flipping it, I just wondered if the courtyard could just be moved just south of building A, which looks already to have some kind of landscaping feature, maybe the courtyard could go there, which would be much simpler. But again, I I don't know, but I I don't think we can remove the view of the travelers B and B because that was the number one issue in the first rendition.
Hey, thank you. Yeah, just some of my comments. I I agree with the view, travels in, I know the owner spent a lot of time and money on it, is very proud of the travelers in. And I believe the view would be very important to that property. The other thing is, I find that plazas, when they're right adjacent to busy intersections, aren't used as much when they're set back a bit and have a bit more protection, privacy away from the noise. And so, you know, personally, I see plazas go back, an example of a plaza or next intersection is at two sixteenth and Glover Road, where we have that artwork commemorating the position of the the old church. I don't, I don't know, councillor Davis lives around the corner there, but I don't think I've ever seen anybody sitting there and enjoying an afternoon with all the traffic close by. So I prefer to see them a little bit further back. And so that's my reasons for, you know, I think it's, I think it's a good idea, but I I can't support switching it around. And also the other reasons that have been, you know, the proponents put a lot of work into it, the proponents spent a lot of time. And so I I in getting a, something that would be acceptable, but, you know, I think switching around would not be the right thing to do, so I can't support that. Councillor Richter?
There seems to be a fair bit of discussion around sightlines. And quite frankly, the buildings that are proposed in this are shorter than the 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 actual travelers hotel. The travelers hotel looks like another residential property. And these two new buildings look like residential properties. And the, if you look at the layout that was there, if you move building A over beside the travelers, it's not going to be blocking the travelers, it's at the same frontage as the travelers is. So I'm not understanding why the sightlines is a problem here. But Mr. Mayor, I I don't want to see this application go down to defeat. I think this proponent has done a lot of work trying to come up with something that fits in with the community, that will enhance the community, he's prepared to live in this building. So it's not going to become run down by any stretch of the imagination, contrary to some of the photos that were shared with council. So in order to save this, I'd like to propose that we refer this matter to staff to discuss with the proponent. And if the proponent thinks that the mirroring wouldn't work, or that moving the courtyard behind building A wouldn't work, and comes back and says that they just want to have it go forward the way they've presented it, then we can have a vote at that point. So I'd make that referral to send it to staff to discuss further with the proponent, whether or not some some of these changes could be made.
Is there a second or? Councillor Arneson seconds it? Discussion on the referral, councillor Long?
Yeah, well, I had to hand up because I was hoping that staff, and in fact, council has it on page seventeen, it's talking about the view corridors. So you know, if you look at that drawing, you'll see that the flipping isn't going to work. But I guess the motion that we're discussing now would be to refer it back for some discussion. So that's a different situation.
Yes, to refer the amendment back.
Yeah, yeah, so I'm not in favor of that, sorry.
Thank you. Any other discussion on that, on referral to send the amendment back for discussion? Okay, I'll call a question, all those in favor? Opposed? So Mayor Fros, councillor Woodward, councillor Long, councillor Kunst, opposed. The motion and carries, is that correct? So the, that correct, yeah, the referral carries. Okay, so now we'll move on to correspondence, there's one, two, five items of correspondence. If we could have a motion to receive all five, councillor Arneson, second or? Second or, any consequence? Discussion, seeing none, call a question, all those in favor? Opposed, carried, councillor Woodward's opposed, okay? And questions on that? Okay, we'll move on to minutes of committee, senior advisor committee, October twenty first, agriculture advisory and economic enhancement committee, and the tree protection advisory committee minutes could have a motion to to receive those. I'm sorry, councillor Whitmarsh, second or? Second.
Davis.
Councillor Davis, discussion councillor Richter?
I would just like to note that in the Tree Protection Advisory Committee, there were, there was a guest present at that meeting, and the guest is not listed. Isn't it normal practice to include guests that attend meetings?
I know, it's according to Ms. Bauer, she's shaking hands, she says no, if she wants to elaborate. But Ms. Bauer, no, we don't. No, we don't, it'd be like a council meeting, we don't. List all the people that show up, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll call a question, all those in favor? Posed, carries, thank you. And I got my mayor's report. So, good afternoon, everyone. Remembrance Day is this Wednesday, with local ceremonies being held virtually. We encourage all of you to watch and think about the brave men and women who gave so much for our country, our freedom, and our way of life. As you're aware, the public health officer has stated that we must significantly reduce our level of social interactions and travel. This order is in effect from November seventh to November the twenty third. I'll maybe slow down a little bit and get the pictures up. Sorry, I should, I sort of waited a bit for staff to catch up to me. So the, I'll just, I'll just hold the hold for a bit so you can see where the services will be held in Langley, it'll be virtual. And very, very few people attending, so certainly, and I I do encourage everyone to take part in this very significant Canadian event. So with that, I wanted to talk a little bit about, after that, a little bit about some of the new orders that come down, where we are in Langley, and certainly what my encouragement is for residents of Langley and everywhere to adhere to these to these orders and recommendations. This is becoming very serious, and we've seen in other countries where COVID has has taken hold, overwhelmed their hospitals, and overwhelmed the healthcare workers, and and worse, a devastating toll on people's lives and health. So as I started, the provincial health officer has stated that we must significantly reduce our level of social interactions and travel. This order is in effect from November seventh to twenty third. And Dr. Henry has requested the following. Socialize with those in your immediate family and or group of people who live in the same dwelling. People who live alone can socialize with one or two people at home, outside, or at a restaurant. These one or two people become your immediate household. For gatherings, no social gatherings of any size with anyone other than your immediate household. Do not invite friends or extended family to your household. Do not gather outdoors, do not gather in restaurants. Funerals and weddings may proceed with your immediate household only. For group physical activities, businesses, recreation centers, and other organizations that organize or operate indoor group physical activities must suspend these activities. And this includes spin classes, yoga, group fitness, dance classes, or any other group indoor activity that increases the respiratory rate. Indoor sport, indoor sports where physical distancing cannot be maintained are suspended. This includes activities like boxing, martial arts, hockey, volleyball, and basketball. These activities can be replaced with individual exercise or practice that allows everyone to to maintain a safe physical distance. Indoor group physical activities can only resume when the business has updated their COVID nineteen safety plan and received plan approval from their local medical health officer. In workplace safety, all businesses and work sites must conduct active daily in-person screening of all onsite workers using the COVID nineteen system symptom check. It's a symptom checklist that was, is part of every business restart safety plan. Workplaces must ensure that all workers and customers maintain appropriate physical distance and wear masks where appropriate. Extra care should be taken in small office spaces, break rooms, and kitchens, nutrition centers. Encouraging news today is that Prime, from Prime Minister Trudeau, he stated that Pfizer's is promising a COVID nineteen vaccine trial that is encouraging development, which can see the first step towards restoring Canada's social and economic life. If it all goes well, he said, the Pfizer vaccines should be available to Canadians sometime over the first three months of twenty twenty-one. And as you can see, I'm wearing a mask in the township facilities, we are all wearing masks. And if we're meeting for a lengthy period of time, it is very important that we wear the masks. And today, it's all I've seen in here is masks. We may not like it, but this is important to protect everyone else from a potential. And I've, I know, I personally know people who have become infected, and it's it's not a good thing. There's isolating, and they're always concerned for the loved ones that they've been in touch with. So I encourage everyone to stay safe, stay healthy, and please wear a mask. And as we say in translate, wearing is caring. So thank you very much for that. I have some questions or comments from members of council. Councillor Richter?
Actually, I'm not quite sure why my hand's up there, sorry.
Okay, it's leftover, councillor Woodward?
I just want to confirm you're done with your mayor's report, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so I I guess I'll do it then. I just want to congratulate Emily Anne Belet, Megan Dykman, for the BCNDP on her her victory here this past weekend, confirmed with the mail-in count. The elections are tough and the campaigns are hard, and I just want to congratulate her and every other candidate that ran. I'm glad to have that election over with and get back to work from Langley, but I'll at least congratulate her on that, thanks.
Thank you, and I'd also like to congratulate Emily DeYoung and Emily Banman, who are also members, let's say, of the assembly representing the township of Langley. So thank you for reminding me, councillor Woodward, and it's, you know, we'll move on.
Good luck on Mr. Mayor, more than happy to give you that.
I'm sorry, thank you. I missed that. Okay, so we'll go on to councillor Ferguson.
Oh, yes, okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know that sometimes with past mayors, I'm not sure if you have, we've had a minute of silence in chambers. We are, I guess, we're not in chambers, we're not able to do that. And to remember those that served, and no matter eleventh, our our public aren't able to go to the ceremonies. We'll hope that they'll see it online, or it'll be on TV as well, for the people who want to celebrate some of the other things as well. You know, myself and other members being a member of the Legion, and also participant in in many of the events in the past. So I I know we won't be able to do the minute of silence. Okay, my second thing.
We'll do one at the end of the, at the end of the meeting.
Okay, thank you. My second thing is under Metro Vancouver representative's report. I did want to say that the Indigenous Committee have been meeting with the nations and are working towards, again, an excellent relationship with Metro Vancouver. And the CAO, Mr. Dovernos, he has been meeting with nations as well as being well-received and working on opportunities that exist that, I'm talking about air quality, I'm talking about parks, I'm talking about other initiatives that the Metro Vancouver offers, and that is working very, very well. There was also a motion that was approved by your board, Mr. Mayor, Metro Vancouver Board, by putting it by Mayor Booth, our chair from Indigenous Committee, is a reconciliation and putting together a a motion that the Metro Vancouver considered the reconciliation. And that's a very, it was passed by the board, and it's a very, very positive thing in reconciliation in Indigenous nations. As far as I've always said, with the other committee being liquid waste, we're meeting and going over the initiatives for Iona Island, the upgrade, and they're building the new plant with environmental measures and others. And my last, again, information, I always say, don't flush these down the toilet, put them in the garbage. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Kunst?
No, thank you. I just wanted to mention that I participated in the forum on Saturday. The Metro Vancouver had put forward on systemic racism. And I'd just like to encourage other members of council, as there's another four gates. It was very well done, there were four or five different speakers that, you know, told their stories. And I just thought it was very, very well done and would encourage everyone to participate.
Thank you for that. My hand's coming up, councillor Arneson?
Oh, I'll make it brief, but thank you, and thank you for the reference to Remembrance Day, unfortunately, because of COVID.
Oh, you're muted, you've accidentally muted.
I call myself a mutation. I I just wanted to say thank you very much for bringing up our Remembrance Day, obviously, and it's too bad that we can't meet. But I did want to advise council that, as I have done in many past years, I went to the city of Langley where they had a virtual photography session where I was representing the township by laying a wreath at their cenotaph down at Douglas Park. And so that's going to be made available, I believe, on the eleventh of November. And they are creatively using past clips of the flyovers. And I think also interviews with some veterans to round out what is going to be effectively a wonderful archive for this year, despite the challenges of COVID nineteen. So I just want to share that.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Councillor Ferguson, your hand still up, is that from before? You're muted.
Muted, Steve.
You're muted.
The councillor Woodward actually gave you some advice, thank you very much. I did want to say that continue with what we said, we should congratulate the the two Langley and of course, there's three Langley, new MLA. And and Mr. Mayor, we should are at our biggest, our best opportunity to meet with them and find out, just say hello and show our, what we're moving in the future, what Langley's doing, the township of Langley. And that would be something that we should consider, you can tell staff to find a date and maybe move forward with that. That's my suggestion.
Certainly, we generally do that and look forward to meeting with all of our four MLAs. All right, so now we're going to move on to Metro Vancouver representative's report, which we've already kind of done, but now we're into this speeches, two-minute presentation, so I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Bauer, and I will turn the meeting over to her to to handle this part and be our timekeeper and let us know how we will be proceeding through M one, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Fros. I do need some direction from council first. There was no recommendation as to how we would order the speakers. Currently, I have taken a list of the order in which I received them, and we can go with that, or council may have another idea. The order of speakers I requests I received started with Mayor Fros, then councillor Long, councillor Arnes- The order of speakers I requests I receive started with Mayor Fros, then Counselor Long, Counselor Arneson requested to be an alternate, Counselor Ferguson, Counselor Richter, and Counselor Woodward. Would be, could we go with that order?
Unless there's something else Council wish to do, but that's, I think that's fair. So it looks like no one's asking anything, so we can go with that order. Yeah, great. All right. So you can tell me when you want me to start.
Hey, I'm ready.
Great. Well, thank you for giving me this opportunity to report on my role as one of the Township of Langley representatives on the Metro Vancouver Board of Directors, and thank you for giving me that privilege. I've had the pleasure of serving the township of Township on the borders as director during my first term, alternate director during my second term, and director this term. At the beginning of this current term, I was appointed by council to be the metro board, to metro board as the director. It was an interesting start to the term, as many of the twenty-one regional mayors, electoral director and Tawasim First Nation Chief were replaced either through stepping down or not being reelected. As one of the four returning mayors from the previous term, Chair Dalual and Vice Chair Buchanan appointed me to sit on several committees. I'm currently the Chair of the Zero Waste Committee, Vice Chair of the Regional Planning and Agriculture Committee, Member of the Water Committee, and the Mayors Committee. The Finance and Inter-Governance Committee is made up of the chairs of the other committees, and as Chair of the Zero Waste, I have a seat on this committee. It is important to note that the Township of Langley has not had a seat on the Finance and Inter-Governance Committee in the past, and I believe it is important to maintain this regional position. I'm appointed by Metro Vancouver to the Municipal Finance Committee as one of the four metro appointments, who make up four out of the ten trustees of the MFA in British Columbia. MFA is like the bank to municipalities, regional districts, school districts, and hospitals, provides loans for capital projects throughout the province. I'm also appointed to the George Massey Crossing Task Force and the COVID nineteen Response Task Force, which is made up of the region's mayors. Also sit on the search committee to also sat on the search committee to find the replacement for the former CEO. I've built great relationships with the regional mayors, councillors, and staff during my work on metro and translink. I look forward to serving the township over the next two years and continuing the important regional work to build a vibrant future for our residents. In closing, I want to thank Counselor Richter for her service as director on the board, Councillors Arneson and Ferguson for their work as alternate directors, and Counselor Long as a member of the Housing Committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Fros. That was exactly two minutes.
Bonus.
And now it would be Counselor Long, please.
Well, thank you very much. And, you know, I often remind myself and others that we are indeed a part of a region, you know, the pipes and the services that are so much required for our citizens far exceed the boundaries of the Township of Langley. And with the growth that we've experienced and will continue to experience, it means that the relationship with our neighbors is more and more important. So since I was first elected in ninety-nine, I've always tried to think of the big picture. Uh, I've often coined the phrase, we're as unique as everyone else. So I spent a dozen years of service on the Executive Board of the Federation of Canadian Municipalities, advocating for more resources for local government. I've also served on the executive of the U B C N, that's the Union of British Columbia Municipalities. And I was also president of the Lower Mainland Local Government Association. So being part of these big picture organizations has indeed taught me the importance of working together and collaborating with our neighbors, other municipalities, for the common good of our citizens. So my work as well in the past has included being involved with Metro Vancouver. I did serve as the Vice Chair of the Metro Parks. And as Vice Chair was able to advocate, and very successfully, I might add, for the increased funding to purchase and develop additional parklands. Now, we're spending more money, but the good news is it's a particular benefit to Township of Langley residents because the great portion of the fourteen thousand five hundred hectares of protected and fully maintained passive and active parkland resides in the Township of Langley. So it's very good news for those of us that like to frequent places like Campbell Valley Park, Oldagore Regional Park, Land Valley or Derby Reach. And the good part is that the cost of being defrayed and spread over the entire region. In fact, Vancouver is one of the biggest contributors to the park system in the in Metro Vancouver, and they don't even have a Metro Vancouver Park.
Sorry, Counselor Long, that is two minutes.
Oh, very good. Well, thank you very much.
And Counselor Arneson, you would be next, and you were talking of being an alternate.
Yes, thank you. Probably more than two minutes, so just give me the high sign. Uh, let me see. Am I, don't start yet. I'll sit myself up. Thank you. Okay, so thank you, my council colleagues. Um, I am putting my name forward to be once again the alternate or the alternate to the alternate for Metro Vancouver. It is very important that the person who is an alternate, although you don't often go to the meetings, remain abreast of all of the details of budget and other considerations. Um, it is true that Metro Vancouver provides us services that are indispensable, such as wastewater management, potable water provision, and other infrastructure that we rely on, especially as a growing community. So as an alternate, it's important that you make yourself available to meet with the person that you are attending on behalf of, to become abreast of what's happening, to be primed for anything that's particularly of interest on the particular agenda item having to do with township interests. I was able to do that once and was totally prepared as an understudy to do it again, but wasn't necessitated at that time. So to be proactive, I think, is one of the characteristics of an individual that you would want to send. Uh, you never know when you're going to be needed, and it's also important then to attend meetings to know what's happening in metro so that you can understand what our common interests are and that the conditions as they change. Most recently, I went to the budget discussions. They were very interesting, and I found a lot of detailed information there. So I'm putting my name forward for consideration in this actually very important role and hope that you, as my council colleagues, will support my desire to continue as an alternate for the coming year. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Arneson. Next would be Counselor Ferguson, please.
Well, thank you. I I have minded of your probably be brief. I've had the opportunity of serving on Metro Vancouver in the past, and I've had the privilege of being alternate director. And as we indicated before, that's keeping abreast, including with the new C A O, Mr. Dovernowski, who I've known in the past and have an excellent working relationship with. My attendance has been a hundred percent attendance for Indigenous Committee, a hundred percent attendance on the liquid waste. I meet with staff prior and after meetings. I also go in and meet staff on non-committee days. I also send emails back and forth, especially especially regarding my appointment by the Metro Vancouver Board of Directors at to the treaty table. Uh, I'm dedicated and committed to serving within the region. I believe it's important. I think it's important that I have the time and I have the energy to take and put into the actual Metro Vancouver. I would ask my colleagues continue to support me to do the work that that I am dedicated and committed towards doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Ferguson. And next is Counselor Richter, please.
Yes, thank you. I am very honored to have had the support of this council to attend Metro Vancouver. This was a first for me in twenty years. And I believe it was also a first for this council because I don't think there's ever been another woman representative uh in a metro position. I have worked very hard to respect your trust. I've attended all but one metro meeting. I have read all of my packages, and believe me, this is a major undertaking because most of those packages are well over five hundred pages. Some even get close to a thousand. I don't rubber stamp decisions there. I'm not afraid to participate in meetings. I often pull items off the consent agenda, as the mayor can attest to. And this usually results in very good discussion amongst the different board members. I regularly send email updates to my council colleagues here from metro. Uh, I have fought for budget reductions, and we got those this year. Uh, there are many key issues that are coming forward in the next two years, including amalgamation or potential amalgamation of the Sewage District, continued holding of the line on budget for metro, a focus on climate mitigation, the Regional Prosperity Program, to name a few. So in short, I have done the job and I have done it well. And I am respectfully asking for your vote and your support for another two years as the metro or one of the metro representatives of this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Richter. And next is Counselor Woodward, please.
Yeah, thanks for the opportunity for the two-minute speech. I think people are probably surprised that I have any interest in serving as a Metro Vancouver representative because actually I really don't. But I may still stand for election. I'll determine that later on. Um, I've been in the audience for a long time, as some members of council here can attest. And I've always wondered honestly how Metro Vancouver representatives were chosen. And of course, that's always done behind closed doors, as it'll be done again today. You know, and when I confirmed actually getting on lecter on council, it seems to have very little to do with actual governance of Metro Vancouver. From what I understand, you know, most of the staff recommendations and the consenting gender are accepted. And it reinforces to me that the model that we have for such an important institution that the public doesn't know much about really isn't working to appoint elected elected officials to the board, really should become a directly elected entity to become more responsive to the people, especially given the budget of Metro Vancouver far in excess of of many municipalities that are members of it. So again, I I feel like this has turned into a bit of a payday for some members and some politicians in the public rather than an actual elective representation to achieve anything specific. Uh, and I find that a bit sad and and I wish that it had more to do with some of the items or grounds of what we're trying to achieve there, what individual members of council hope to achieve there, and how Langley is being represented at Metro Vancouver rather than Metro Vancouver being represented in Langley. So again, I I would vote for a wholesale overhaul of the entire institution. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Woodward. Are any of the other councillors interested in making a presentation?
My hand?
Yes.
Counselor Davis has got.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I don't understand. Should uh the, does Counselor Woodward's want to run or did he? Is he using this two minutes? Just I don't, I don't, I didn't get this whole thing. So, you know, should, why don't we all talk for two minutes? I I don't, are you, do you, do you want to run or do you, are you, were you just using that to to give us advice? I, okay, do I, I've got your name down here. Do I, anyhow. Uh, maybe just a comment. Do you, okay.
I'm happy to respond. I don't know if the chair is going to allow me to respond, so.
I've turned this position, this this part over to the clerk who is following a motion of counsel and until this portion is over, it's in the clerk's hands. If you want to take, you know, it's up to the clerk. I'm not sharing this part.
Do I lead, do I consider it? Do I consider Eric or Counselor Woodward's or not?
I would guess that that'll be something that occurs behind closed doors, which is a flaw in the entire process, correct?
That is correct, Counselor, or Counselor, Counselor Woodward. As it is a personnel issue, it is dealt with in a closed meeting. I believe that completes the process, Mayor Fros.
Yeah, to determine which elected representatives we have.
Hey, thank you, Ms. Bauer. Thank you very much. So now we're going to move on to other business. And oh, one is request for is, sorry, it's a motion from Counsel Arneson, request for council support for representation on the Metro Climate Action Committee. So Counsel Arneson, I'll turn it over to you.
Uh, thank you, worship. And I have to say, I'm a bit sheepish because I thought this was going to go forward in the closed meeting. So now you're going to have to listen to me for a couple of minutes. So that wasn't my two minutes. Um, so the process is that I have been a representative on the Climate Action Committee for two years on behalf of the Township of Langley. I'm the first.
So first of all, do you want to, do you want to move the motion?
Oh, sorry. Yeah, I want to leap in with both feet. Yeah, I'll move the motion. Yeah.
Answer a second or Counsel Kuhn seconds. Okay, thank you. Now, please proceed.
Okay, well, I won't start that part again. Uh, so basically, I'm the first person that's been a representative to the Township of Langley on metro. Um, and I put forward, I have a degree in Health and Environmental Studies, as well as a master's in Environmental Studies and a law degree. I bring that forward because many of the issues that we talk about at the committee are very complicated and scientific in nature. And therefore, it's extremely helpful to have somebody who's got a background that can understand somewhat complicated situations at times. Some of the specific things that I brought forward, I think further to some people's concerns are issues that have to do with what's ongoing in the Township of Langley. So I've created a very strong liaison with our sustainability team, talking about E V transportation, building energy conservation policies, building retrofits, and other things related to reducing greenhouse gases. Um, I've also developed a very strong collaborative relationship with other community members where we talk about issues that are broadly across the region in order to enhance our climate outcomes. I participate in all the monthly meetings, and also in addition to that, I go to many educated webinars and workshops related to climate policy, both on the national and international level, in order to become informed and educated. As this information evolves, it's important to keep up. I'm also a member of the Pan-Canadian Climate Action Caucus and participate in their twice monthly Zoom meetings when I'm able. Uh, concurrently with my C A C activities.
I'm just going to interject because, you know, it's kind of you're moving on to adding to your two minutes. So what I see, what I see is this motion is that you're asking for support as a letter to council. So
That's right.
I think maybe we should, otherwise, that's another, another two-minute speech. No, that's not fair.
Okay, that's fine. Okay, I'm happy with that.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Ferguson, just on the letter.
That's an excellent idea that Counsel Arneson has brought. And I just think that I'd like to make an amendment that that a similar letter to endorse to the Chair for further appointments to Counselor, to Mayor Fros, Counselor Ferguson, Counselor Richter, and Counselor Long for their committee work as well. Similar letters go. I would so move.
I'll second that.
Counsel Richter seconds the amendment, discussion on the amendment. I don't see any, um Counsel Woodward.
I'll support the amendment because it makes it eminently more easy for me to vote against the entire motion.
Certainly, Counsel Davis. Counsel Davis.
Okay, I I'm a, um, I'm uh, we're, are we not having an election?
Yeah, this is a letter of support for those around committees. It's up to, the way it works is the Chair and the Vice Chair determines who sits on the committees. And if they feel that, it really is up to them. It's just a support, letter of support.
But aren't, I I see that, but what, I'm not trying to be cheeky, but what if if Counsel Arneson doesn't get elected?
What? Yeah, the Chair and Vice, the Chair and Vice Chair can appoint any member of council.
Okay.
And so they, they don't have to be Director. So
No problem. Thank you very much.
Certainly appropriate in order if council wants to support this. It's just a letter, but the final decision rests with the Chair and the Vice Chair.
Okay, so Counselor Arneson, you are truly interested in this position.
So, okay, Counsel Whitmarsh.
Yeah, I just wondered if this was the normal practice across metro that whenever people, council members want to be on a particular committee, that the Chair gets all sorts of letters all across the region of of support? Is this a normal expectation or practice?
I I think you can see from tonight's speeches that certainly there are those that lobby to get positions on committees. And so whether it's from their council or individually, the Chair and the Vice Chair have a difficult job to do. I can tell you that.
Yeah, for sure. So we haven't, okay.
Yeah, thank you. Counsel Richter.
Yeah, I just wanted to respond to Counselor Whitmarsh, if I may, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
It seems that the practice with the Chair has been if a metro representative is removed by their council, then whoever comes in to replace that person has at least in the last two years, and we've had several people replaced, like Lois Jackson from Delta, and there was a fellow from Surrey and so on, that those people are put by the Chair into the committee positions that the other representative had. So I I mean, there's no guarantees that Chair Dalual would change that practice or do things differently, but it's probably worth a letter, I think.
And this is a letter of support. It's not, they still maintain their discussion on who goes on. Okay, I'll call a question on the amendment. Who was in favor? Opposed, carries unanimously, and till the main motion is amended. Counsel Woodward, on the main motion is amended?
Yeah, no, I just wanted to clarify so that we're supporting the decision of two people for all the appointments that we have? Is that, is that the letter of support's going out?
Not two, no, not two.
This letter supports the, it's a letter of support to the Chair for those members sitting on committees to remain on those committees. That's all, that's all.
Okay, so I think that that, again, is sort of this whole process highlights how flawed this is that, you know, one person. Okay, so I think that that again, this sort of this whole process highlights how flawed this is that, you know, one person chooses who represents the region on these important committees. We have to send them letters to essentially stick with what we have. Again, again, I need to highlight how undemocratic this entire institution seems to be, the more that I learn about it. And there's also a, you know, I don't know how, how we can sort of support that process in principle that one or two people get to decide who represents the region on these.
Well, that's the process at Metro Vancouver. So you'd have to be on the board of Metro Vancouver to change that. And that's the process that they have, so. All right, I'll call the question. All those in favor? The motion is amended? Opposed? Carries, councillor Woodward opposed. Okay. So we want to, oh, two, councillor Arneson. You're muted. Councillor Arneson, you're muted. There you go. There you go. I'd like to start over. So if you wish to move, move it second, if you wish to speak to it then.
I'll move it, please, and speak to it.
Is there a second or councillor Whitmarsh seconds, councillor Arneson, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, worship. I do appreciate the opportunity to speak to this motion in advance of, I know what will be robust discussion. And my colleagues' opinions in this novel situation are particularly appreciated. So it's an implementation, as we all know, of a new policy, which is very novel regarding cannabis retail outlets in the township. So in a nutshell, I brought this forward because, as you can all see, there have been numerous requests for reconsideration from a variety of proponents and fundamentally for different reasons. However, the one that I have focused on is the fact that when council was considering and given the criteria that was came from the province and came from the regulations, then we decided that we wanted to congregate all those different applications and council-directed staff to come up with some helpful guidelines and that happened. However, I think that this fundamental change, when we had the, the opportunity to discuss all of these, is that in effect, what we did de facto or by default, however you want to look at it, is that we took criteria that did not apply necessarily in the first instance. So all of the provincial and other regulations that had been met by those proponents in the timeline that was approved that came to council, that was all fine. But then we, we wanted to, for rational reasons, streamline the process. So in effect, what happened is, I feel strongly that there was an attempt to disenfranchise, unfortunately, certain individuals whose applications never had the opportunity to be vetted by the public because we wanted to try and narrow down the application. So it sort of went to a position of, well, if one has five or one has six, wouldn't we be better off just to get rid of them now? And made some mitigation compensation to give some of them their money back for the application. I think from a point of view of procedural fairness, that this was unfortunately not really a good way to go. And I think that I wanted to bring this forward because I think that as a result of the feedback that we got, it would be preferable from the proponents' point of view and from a fairness point of view, that it won't change the outcome in any way. We still have the framework. We still have the criteria. We have everything that we had before, but at the very least, allow those ones that we didn't allow to go forward to go to first and second so that they can be vetted by the public and we can ultimately make a good decision based on public input. So that's why I brought this forward.
Great, thank you. Councillor Richter.
Yeah, I, I agree with councillor Arneson on the procedural fairness matter. I think that that's a very valid concern that a number of applicants have raised. I still think we're going to be in a bit of a piccolo once we put all these through to public hearing, how we're going to decide after the fact that only eight of them are going to be selected. But I'm going to support this motion on the basis of procedural fairness as outlined by councillor Arneson. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Woodward.
Yeah, I just kind of reiterate again how botched this retail cannabis has been from the beginning. And, you know, we, we hear a lot about making stuff up on the fly, which is exactly what this process has been. We changed the criteria on legitimate applications after applications had been made and then rejected them based on that. This reconsideration is an attempt to repair that, but it doesn't change the fact that we still have a flawed process. What criteria are we going to use at third, third reading that we're not using at first and second? Are we going to make up some more? To again, to try to eliminate valid proponents. So to me, this whole process needs to be rethought. I, I don't know how we're making this. And again, when is a decision ever a decision at this council? We reconsider stuff constantly. I just personally believe that the business community deserves more respect than this. You know, maybe one of the people that actually has gone through the process of reading criteria, making an application and then being adjudicated at the council table, I just don't find this process to be at all fair. That we make up criteria, we adopt criteria, people apply, spend a lot of money applying, a lot of time applying, and then the criteria is changed on them, and then they're rejected based upon these new criteria. I just feel that our business community deserves a lot more respect than that. The proponents deserve a lot more respect than that. I still have no idea what basis we're going to be proceeding with since the policy that has been adopted by council isn't even being followed anymore. We're making up new criteria as we go along. So I, I don't support this reconsideration. Though I feel bad about it, maybe I, maybe I should support it just to let everybody go through the process and then somehow they'll be adjudicated a third. Personally, I think the whole entire process needs to be rethought. I don't know where we came up with this idea that the township of Langley needs eight cannabis stores. When I see other municipalities such as Abbotsford lending them to four with very reasonable criteria outlined and confirmed in advance of applications. Again, not picking one over another based upon backroom criteria. Thank you.
Councillor Ferguson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm, I understand the frustration that perhaps councillor Woodward and others would have, and there might be some degree of agreement as to, you know, where he is coming from and his frustration. I would ask staff a quick question. We, as a council, we have the opportunity to approve eight or zero. Is that not true? Or somewhere in between? So I may throw a chair to whoever does, who, I don't even know who looks after it anymore. Which staff member?
Councillor Ferguson, council has, this is a process. If they go to first, second reading, they go to public hearing, council can approve all twenty, they can approve none. It's up to council to make that decision. So
That's the point.
That's the process right now. And if somebody can come up with a better one. That is the process.
But, okay, so councillor Woodward has made that point. I agree. We both agree to disagree. There's some frustration. We agree, agree on that. It's new charted waters. We're looking at cannabis. Some people will say, well, it was approved by the federal government year, well, about a year ago or something. Yes, that's true, but a number of organizations and a number of municipalities have not moved yet. Some are going to move, some won't. We have to decide, but when the time comes after the public hearing, we come in a third reading, it will come down to us deciding whether we want eight or, I don't know if we'd ever have twenty, eight or zero or, or a number between zero and eight. So I think that still has to be decided. As far as, you know, we fumbled around a bit and I'm as much to blame as anybody about what the criteria is, what's commercial area, what's two hundred meter? Oh, there's all sorts of frustration. So and also we're getting indulged by our inundated by emails and phone calls or people saying how good they are. So that's where I, my frustration then. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Long.
Well, you wish, nobody said it was an easy job being on council. I can attest to that for sure. But it is the process that we have. There was public consultation. That's how we got to where we are. Some councillors may not feel that that's, that was appropriate, but I mean, it is what it is. And I have my different opinions on some of the criteria. I guess this motion, in all fairness, is saying, let's bring them all out front. Give them all a shot at the public hearing. I think that's what the motion is really going towards. And, you know, ultimately, we're going to have to decide and it's not going to be easy. But this is a moving target. I mean, this is totally new ground that we're we're treading on here. So we'll just have to pull up our boots and do our very best job we can. And I guess I'll support the motion because they should all come forward. But I do agree and disagree with much of the criteria. And I bet you the criteria I like is different than what other councillors like. And that's just the way it is always when we make a council decision. So we'll do our best and it's, there's going to be some long hours ahead. I guarantee you that, but I'll support the motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Whitmarsh.
Yeah, I'm supportive of this motion for procedural fairness reasons. I think after we finished the discussions last time, I I felt like we were sort of discussing some different criteria and maybe a bit on the fly. And I felt that it would be best to return back and just allow everybody to be brought forward to public hearing. Let's hear from the public. In the end, council's going to have to decide. It won't be an easy decision. It'll be a tough decision. Each council will have to make those decisions for their own reasons, based on the criteria that we do have. And whether we have, you know, one or six or eight or whatever that number is, that'd be up to council to decide. And we're simply going based on what the feedback we receive from the public. So I don't think we're out of line with that. We got a lot of information from the public. That's where the eight came from in the first place. So I, I think this is a good move and it just creates more openness as we move forward.
Thank you, councillor Ferguson. Councillor Ferguson, I don't know where you are, if you're muted or.
Well, I still, okay, can I speak again? Okay, thank you. Okay. I want to ask you a question because I need to remember myself. Mr. Mayor, you said something about council had made a decision to go six. People had six or seven. Was that not the case last time we speak, we spoke?
Yeah, you were, you mean at the meeting, the last meeting.
At the meeting, we said six or sevens for the criteria.
That was the decision. However, this is a motion to, to bring them, bring the rest on board.
I just want to clarify that. I just, thank you. I just want to clarify that.
Councillor Richter.
Yes. I, I agree that what we need to do is to take a look at all of them. I don't think this is going to be an easy thing for us to do. But I just wanted to get clarification from staff. The materials that we've received up to this point in time, will they all be included for review as part of the public hearing process? And I'm asking this because there have been a number of letters, for example, that have come through relative to Alda Grove and the location of a particular facility there, very close to a childcare facility. So would all of those letters still be in the running for consideration at third?
I'll ask Ms Bauer, the clerk.
No, actually, those were received pre first and second reading, so they wouldn't be included in the package going forward. Just a clarification, this is a public input opportunity as it does not, it falls within not changing the, the or being concurrent with the OCP. And the requirement from the liquor and cannabis control branch is for submissions from the public either orally or written. And due to the COVID environment, we are opting for the written submissions at this point as it would be a potential super spreader event with many people coming in to speak at a public hearing.
Okay, so can we put some sort of a notification out on the township page saying if you've sent a letter, change the date and resend it? So we have that input?
Yeah, I can definitely do that.
Okay.
We can put that with the public hearing or the, the written submission submission or the written submission ad that goes out. We can definitely include something in there about resubmissions.
Yeah, because I'm worried that these people's input will be lost and it shouldn't be because some of it's very valid, I think, to the ongoing consideration. Thank you.
No problem. I understand that that is part of the problem. And also, I would prefer to do that as many letters went directly to council and we haven't captured those as they went to councils as opposed to coming into legislative services.
I'm muted again. All right. See, no further discussion. Someone called a question. All those in favor? Opposed? Councillor Woodward is opposed. The motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I did not, I did not say opposed.
Oh, I, I'm sorry. Sorry, hand go up at the end there. So it's carried unanimously. Thank you. Okay, oh, three. So councillor Woodward, I think this has been dealt with.
Uh, no, obviously this will be withdrawn based upon the procedural.
Thank you. So is there any other business? Councillor Richter.
I wanted to ask, in our items distributed, item number six on November fifth is a copy of an article that appeared in one of the local papers regarding the postponement of the Janda Mall. And I'm concerned that this is being postponed. I realized that a while back councillor Arneson had talked about demolishing the old mall. And I'm wondering if I need to put a motion forward to ask staff for a report on whether or not we can require the demolition of the Janda Mall now that they've decided to defer building the new application. So that's my first item. Mr. Mayor, I have two more.
Thank you. So Mrs. Seffey would be, yeah, Mrs. Seffey, if you could respond to that.
Thank you, your worship. Staff was somewhat surprised at the reading of the article that was referenced by councillor Richter as well. So with that surprise, staff did contact the applicant. And there was assurance made that it was not the intent of the applicant to delay, as it was reported in the media, that there was any delay. In fact, the applicant has included, I guess, in the communications with staff social media postings that they have put on that confirms that there are a couple of matters that relates to the timing. One is the nature of the application is quite complex. And the applicant recognizes that there are issues that that need to be reviewed by both parties in, in very, I guess, close and, and determined way in detail. As well as the fact that there are, I guess, land owner and tenant issues that the applicant is dealing with that preclude the possibility of demolition at this point, your worship.
Okay, so where does that leave us? Because we've been hanging in the limbo now for two years and I think we need to get some sort of closure on this.
Well, your worship, the applicant is, is not withdrawn from the process. They're working actively as a staff to try and bring this forward to council. It is not atypical. It is quite common for applications of this complexity and this type of, I guess, a proposal to, to take longer than a year even. It hasn't been a year. It's been, I think, since, since February or March of this year that council actually gave this application three readings. So it is quite possible for it to come forward to council early in the new year. As I said, it's, it's a matter that both applicant and the township staff have been working on aggressively and actively.
Okay, well, I'll just give a heads up then. I'm going to craft some sort of a notice of motion for the next meeting around this. My second item pertains to item twelve in the November fifth items distributed on the firework situation this past Halloween. I think we need to implement some sort of a fireworks hotline. I note in item twelve that people can apply to get permits. I think the issue is there were so many fireworks going off that were very disruptive to people and animals, their animals like horses, dogs, et cetera. And they had nowhere to turn to find out whether or not these were permitted and could they be stopped. So I'm going to bring forward a notice of motion on having a fireworks hotline. The third item I wanted to raise, Mr. Mayor, was we got in our, I got in envelopes to me. I'm assuming other members of council got envelopes as well. Two letters regarding the Tall Timbers project, the Infinity Properties, which of course has not come to council, so we don't have any information on it. But I think these letters should be given to staff to review in the context of this application before it comes to council. So I'm wondering if perhaps, Mr. Mayor, you, your office received them and you could pass them on to Mr. Backen. There's also a letter about rain.
Sorry, if you could just forward them to.
I, I can't. They're hard copy.
Okay, then.
That's the problem. They're signed hard copy.
Take a picture of them and send them off to us because I don't recall getting those.
You don't recall? Okay, I'll do the same thing. There's another one here about about rain gardens. So I'll, I'll do that. I'll take pictures.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, councillor Davis.
Yes, thank you. Could I? Two sixteenth, the interchange has opened. And we're, I'm starting to see the alarming amount of traffic. I'm not so complaining about the traffic is. Um, I'm not so complaining about the traffic is, I've had two or three neighbors come to me and ask, asked what's happening. And we, I know we've borrowed some money for safety, uh, I know we borrowed some money for a light there, and I've seen, uh, geez, I can't remember the company, um, Roadworks, or I, I forget the company. Could we have an update on two sixteenth and Glover, the light that is proposed by the provincial government? And their schedule of work, when it is, because there's lines on the road and lines on the railroad crossing and everything, but boy, the, the traffic bill goes right, like it's a half a mile long at certain times. And so I just, I, I, I don't, it's not just because it's on my road, because I go up the hill now, but maybe because I have had three people ask me what's going on. Could we have a, a, does anybody know what the update is?
Mrs. Seffy, do you have an update?
Yes, thank you, your worship. Uh, the, the project is being managed by the provincial ministry of transportation and infrastructure, and it is currently, uh, either still in the VC bid process, tender process, or has just completed, and that process. And as we understand it, is, is going to go ahead. It required a lot of coordination with the rail company. Uh, but having said that, I understand it's, it's, uh, very close to being commenced.
Okay, so I guess timeframe would, wouldn't be too long.
Early, early in the, in the new year.
Yeah.
January or February of twenty twenty one.
Maybe, okay. Thank you, sir. I'll pass that along.
Thank you. Counselor Long?
Thanks, your worship. I, I just want to, I didn't have this on the list, but I would like to mention it. Now that Counselor Richter's talked about the Janda, um, situation. Can we please, maybe I could request an update from staff? I mean, we did see this article, and I'd rather not see a notice of motion come forward more delayed, so let's I'd like to request that staff give us an update on what's happening with that application, seeing how it's, it's quite an important one for Alder Grove.
So Mr. Seffy, uh, can I be as a memo?
Yeah, or a memo, a memo would be fine.
Certainly, thank you.
And the other one is, I'm not sure if council is aware, but since, uh, the, uh, Dr. Henry gave us some allowances for the movie industry to reboot, and I think it's, it's been about six weeks now, and it's really, really booting up. And we did receive an email, I don't know if all of council did, from a couple of residents, I won't say who they were, concerned about the, the movie activity. There's a lot of movie activity around. And the way it is with movie activity, you've got some great companies and some super companies and some, you know, maybe some starters uppers that maybe don't dot all the i's and cross the t's. And that tends to upset the neighborhood. So, uh, I just want some assurance from staff that we still have our movie department. And that we should be diligent that these movies are happening and make sure that they're following the procedures of notifying neighborhoods when they're shooting and letting off bombs. And I understand there might have been some attendance by a fire department at one of them. I don't want to get into details now, but maybe staff could, uh, send again a memo sometimes assuring us that, that the movie department is, is fully active and that we're dealing with, uh, movie companies within the township and following all the regulations.
Yes, uh, they'll do that, and they're on it. Thank you. That's a nod for Mr. Backen. Okay, Counsel Ferguson?
Yeah, just to continue what Counselor, uh, Richter had already said, well, yeah, we did receive some correspondence. So what I did, because there's no phone numbers or anything, is I mailed a letter back to some of the people and said, please call me and update me. So I got a, um, a phone call back from Mr. Lamb, who many of us might know. Uh, and he'd indicated his concerns in the area about a number of things. So I know it hasn't come to council, but sometimes it's good to be ahead of things. So maybe staff can give us a brief note about what's going on there. And that's the first thing. And another thing is the, um, it's something very simple. The Alder Grove weather radar, apparently they're putting a new one at two six zero zero eighth Avenue and decommissioning the old one. And apparently, because it's a federal operation, i- if I may through a chair, it doesn't involve any township consultation?
That's correct.
Oh, okay. So, but the thing is, my question is, is can that, uh, we're always looking for new uh, locations for our own devices, whether it's our radios or cell, cell tower uh, cells. Uh, can we put some, or can we, a request be made for potential cell? Cell devices put on their towers, because we're always looking for sharing. If I may through a chair.
Yeah, I, I think, uh, Mr. Backen says basically saying that we could, we could request if there's a need in our communications uh, to have an extra tower in that area. Certainly, I think they could be approached.
And one last thing, while they're talking, Mr. Backen and his expertise and the staff, is there any news on, uh, some more cells or cell towers or communication to approve, uh, cell reception in South Langley?
Uh, Mr. Seffy, do you have any updates on that?
Uh, there is nothing that I'm aware of, your worship. We do receive applications from time to time, but nothing's been brought to my attention. Uh, that means, uh, I guess there's nothing going forward to council in the immediate future, but, uh, who knows?
Okay, well, that's fine, because whenever anybody from council phones me, and I only get half the stuff, but I get the idea what they're talking about.
Your worship, may, can I comment there, please?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I would recommend that we start a campaign. If there is issues with, because I'm having some issues with my reception too, that write to the providers somehow, whether they've done individually or if they had to come to council. Because I think the towers are there, but they might need some adjustments, and I don't know if the providers are really paying the attention they should to the service that they're supposed to provide.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll move on to motion resolved and special close for the items on the agenda and on table. Can I have a motion, please?
No move.
Second or? Second move by Counselor Davis, second by Counselor Whitmarsh. So you got nothing added? All those in favor? Opposed, carried? So before we terminate, I would just like to ask, um, members of council to rise in a moment of silence for, uh, in memory of those who have fallen for a country for remembrance day. Thank you. Okay. And I'll ask for a motion to terminate.
Termination!
Counselor Davis moves it second or? Counselor Long, all those in favor? All those carried? Thank you. So we will.